Okay. Are we going to, are we waiting for anybody else to join us, Mr. Leggett?
I believe Jocelyn said she may.
Jocelyn's here.
Oh, she is. Okay. Oh, there she is.
Okay.
That's all I know of.
Okay, good. It was a pleasure to see your daughter at the post office today.
Yeah, thank you for complimenting her dress.
Okay. You can make your presentation, sir, if you would like.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Is that working for you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I don't know how much you guys know about the Wildland, the wildfire task force. I've mostly been communicating with Jocelyn. So I'll do a little bit of an introduction and just kind of summary of what we've been doing. And then kind of get to some of the bigger points I want to hit on. But the task force right now is comprised of six individuals, myself. I'm a firefighter, been a firefighter for 14 years, currently a captain at Mountain View Fire. We also have Ryan Hughes, lives up Stone Canyon, former Wildland firefighter. We have Chris Cope, and he's actually stepped down to some degree from the task force. He's on the LFPD board, but then he also just recently joined the utilities commission, I think it was. So he was feeling a little overburdened. But he's gonna stay on our emails and kind of be our liaison with the fire district. We also have Candace Owens, National Science Foundation and National Center of Atmospheric Research. Kara Baumann, I think you guys all know her. And then Kristen Johnson, she was previously with Lions Prepared, she's no longer with them. She's primarily dealing with some stuff at home and then helping us out. So that's kind of the crew. Let me see if I can get my slides to advance here. There we go. So we've had, the task force has had six meetings so far, just amongst the task force. We've had a couple other meetings, lots of emails. We've met with the fire district twice. And if you guys haven't seen kind of what the objectives of the task force were, this is what we were directed to do is work with the fire protection district. A lot of the MOU partners for Forest Health. Work on identifying the large scale planning efforts of kind of the adjacent agencies, so open space. The other fire districts, watersheds, things like that on what they're doing. And see if we can opportunist on those, capitalize on them and help Lions out as well. We also were directed to guide the PCDC on Wildland Urban Interface Code, and I'll dive into that a little bit. And that's probably gonna be one of the first big pieces that will send the PCDC and may come across your guys' desk. And then just kind of community, community communication and outreach. And also kind of focusing in on some of the comp planning. So so far, the task force really has just been trying to learn. There's, there's a lot of stuff there. I don't know how much you guys have spent, how much time you've spent looking at the Community Wildfire Preparedness Plan, the county plans, the county's disaster mitigation plan is 600 pages. And these are all things that are relevant to the mission of the task force, the town. So we've been digging through those, trying to find out what they mean, how they apply to the town, and translate that to kind of a clear message for the PCDC and you guys. So you can take advantage or look at how to navigate some of these issues. And then we've also been, again, working with the PCDC. We recently collaborated with the Sustainable Futures Commission on trying to get a slash collection event. Unfortunately, it kind of fell through. There were some logistical challenges that we weren't able to bring together. But it's still on the radar and hopefully, hopefully gonna happen before the end of the year. I need to connect with Kim Mitchell, kind of stepped in to help us navigate that. And then I mentioned the protection district and then I've communicated with various town staff. Victoria's helped me out on a couple of things and so forth. So ultimately, I think everybody probably knows this, the fire problem for Lions is big. Last year, Colorado had its worst season on record. And we were seeing fires that were traveling 18 miles in distance. We saw the largest acreage and run ever in Colorado, Colorado history. So largest distance burned in one day. Boulder County saw its largest fire in its history. And then one of the biggest challenges that we're dealing with is that the town itself's kind of scope of authority and influence is geographically small. We're dealing with a problem that's originating up on the continental divide and threatening our town. You know, I think we are, and everybody is realizing this after we've solved Cowood Fire. I don't know if you guys got to watch the video that Jocelyn sent. But the town very much is at the eye of what could be a very bad storm. I think we saw it with the Cowood Fire and what happened to some of the homes down there just along 36. One of the challenges and probably one of the greatest challenges that we've identified is that the town itself and everybody around us is resource constrained. And that, that presents a lot of issues, obviously, nothing that you guys are not familiar with. But then also, the fact that the town is at such high risk and that that risk originates outside of the town. We have this mosaic of properties that surround us, and they're all equally resource constrained. They all come with their challenges to work with. It's hard for a town of 2,000 people to ask the forest service feds to go take on a multimillion dollar forest thinning effort, right, to the west of us, which is what needs to happen. So this is just, again, adding to part of the problem. It's very complex. Right there, I listed some of the agencies that are part of the Forest Health MOU. And as you guys know, like, trying to get anybody to do anything, to spend their money is in itself challenging. And we're dealing with that a little bit, reaching out to open space. Even working with the fire district a little bit, trying to, trying to get folks to buy in and help lead the charge. And that's really what needs to happen is we all need to get together on this MOU and tackle this together. And then the problem's very real for us. This is just the town itself, within the town limits. I pulled this from the Boulder County Disaster Plan, Mitigation Plan. 876 residential structures that are all in the high hazard category. That's 100% of the town, over 355 million assessed value and population of 2,000 people. Out of curiosity, did folks get to watch the video that Jocelyn emailed? Maybe quick show of hands or heads. So I'm gonna touch on them here a little bit, but there's a lot of parallels that we can draw between those communities and Lions, and I've got some of the data that will show. So this is a really interesting picture to me. This is a drone picture taken from, I'm pretty sure where you're not supposed to fly drones, right near the Golden Eagle's Nest, but looking kind of parallel to the south down Ewald. Hall Ranch is on the right, and then the town kind of begins on the left there. I actually live on Ewald, and I saw this photo and used it previously for something else. And it dawned on me that what is actually going on there is the fuel load increases when you get to town. It is primarily deciduous trees and people's ornamental trees and whatnot, but there's also the homes. And I'm gonna kind of touch on how that is a problem for us. This is a photo from the Cowood Fire, and this is on the east side of 36. You guys have probably all seen that home driving to Boulder. I think it's important to note that the Cowood Fire burned one home on the east side of 36. And then also, the, I'm trying to remember, Old Stage Fire, about 10 years ago, burned two homes on the east side of 36. As you guys all know, the east side of 36 is primarily grass. You can see there, a lot of the trees are actually still standing. And that problem starts with the fact that a lot of these homes were built prior to any sort of Wildland Urban Interface Code. And then the magnitude and intensity of the fires that we're seeing now. Here's a photo, Waldo Canyon, 346 homes destroyed. Again, I wanted to put this in there to kind of show the fuel load. I think there's a misconception out there that Lions is primarily homes, pavement, and grass fuel models. And that, that kind of perspective was true previously. The urban interface did primarily used to be homes that were in evergreen forests, very heavily wooded west of us. But now we're seeing with these wind driven events, the drought conditions that we're having, we're seeing entire neighborhoods be wiped out. This is a screen grab from the video that Jocelyn sent of Talent, Oregon. So that fires interesting. It wiped out the neighborhood, and one of the comments in the video is that the town was all pavement. And it was again, a wind driven fire with deciduous trees in a river valley. And three fatalities over two days, all that destruction happened. And if you guys got to look at that Arizona Central article that was also included, you can plug in the town's risk profiles. And this one was quite interesting to everybody. This, both of the video and this news article came to us from the fire district. They forwarded on to us. And when you plug in Lions, you plug in Talent, you plug in Paradise, it's a scale of one to five, and it shows your risk profile compared to Paradise, California. Lions is 3.45, Paradise, California, it's 3.81. Paradise, California, if you guys can remember, I'm gonna forget the exact numbers. I want to say it was over 3,000 homes burned. But it was the most expensive. It surpassed Katrina for the most expensive natural disaster in U.S. history. Talent, Oregon, which the video shows, is a 2.46. So Lions is a higher risk profile than Talent, Oregon, and approaching Paradise. And the thing that was really interesting to me about the way that they aggregated this data, they, they used 65 risk factors, fuel models, topography, drought conditions, and then they ran them through possible fire scenarios. So they used potential modeling, fire modeling, for what we could see to determine our risk profile. And then ultimately, what the task force has identified is that we are behind the curb. And this is not just Lions. This is disaster resiliency and mitigation efforts are historically reactive and post-disaster. We really need to shift, I had the benefit of taking a class with Dr. Desiree Crowe, who I know Victoria's worked with, she worked with the town in the recovery process. And the big, one of the biggest points in the entire class was that we need to shift to more proactive measures. So the task force is trying to, to focus on those proactive measures, those proactive efforts that we can take. I think one of the biggest issues that stands out to me is that the town does not have any Wildland Urban Interface Code. Boulder County does, Larimer County does, the city of Boulder does, Nederland does. And the town has nothing. And like I said, that's gonna be one of the first kind of formal recommendations that we're gonna advance to you guys. What we're looking at there is trying to align, and the fire district, we met with them on this, trying to align what the town adopts first with just what Boulder County already has. It makes enforcement easier, it makes buy-in from the community a little bit more palatable. And I'll talk a little bit more about the WU code here in a minute. And then I know we're all constrained by the resources, financial, jurisdictional, and the workload. So we, we wanted to look at ways to try to solve those problems as well with some of the things that we're gonna be putting forward. And then, to my knowledge, and please speak up, I know many of you have been in town a lot longer than I have, there hasn't been a significant wildfire resiliency push from the town. I know we've done curbside pickups, things of those natures in the past, but it's gonna need to be a campaign, it's gonna be, need to be large scale and sustained. I know last year was a weird year with COVID and some of these collection events and whatnot fell off. But as it looks right now, unless the task force and the town can, can get together and make it happen, there may not be a collection event this year, so. Again, I think I've kind of hit on all of these, kind of what the task force is doing. A messaging campaign, the WU code, fuels reduction and mitigation plans. We wanted to identify funding mechanisms and kind of those processes and some grants. Again, we identified that the resource constraints are probably one of the biggest challenges that everybody faces. So grants is one of the better avenues for, for us to consider. We're also doing a gap analysis of the previous wildfire protection pro, plan. And if you guys haven't looked at that, it was, it's about 10 years old now. Primarily effort was led by the fire district and the town to identify what mitigation projects needed to happen in the fire district. And what we've found so far is not a lot of them have happened. There's a lot of work to be done. I think, again, it just comes from the challenges of getting the resources to complete these. It's not cheap, it's not easy. The, the what, what we're gonna, the approach we're taking, and we're kind of modeling this after the state. So there's a legislator-led commission, Colorado Fire Commission, and their entire job is to make recommendations to the legislator on what the state should do to combat the wildfire problem. So I'm actually using it kind of as the model for our task force to make recommendations to you guys. The first one that you guys will probably see will be Wildland Urban Interface Code. It's, we're gonna get in there and we're gonna try to detail what exactly needs to happen. It's gonna be big, it's gonna take a while. There's gonna need to be community, community input, it's gonna have to go through revisions, et cetera. And the way we're tackling these recommendations is kind of the short term. So what can we affect this year? That's the things like the slash event, curbside pickup, that, that are not as expensive, a little bit easier to accomplish. And those are the things that we're gonna try to do now. Then we're gonna make 2022 budget year recommendations. One of the first ones, and I'll get to it here in a second, I think that we may try to make is town-owned properties. Those are the lowest hanging fruit, if you will, they're the easiest for you guys to sign off on. You have the authority and jurisdiction to mitigate them. We're gonna make a recommendation, try to get the costs, look at the capacity needs for the, the town to mitigate town-owned properties. And then the, kind of the second or third perspective we're taking is the comp. What do we need to put into the comp plan? The WU code is gonna be a long process, so it may end up in a more of a comp plan recommendation. Real quick, I wanna touch on a couple of things about WU code. I know it can be a politically challenging thing to take on because it comes at a cost to developers, it comes at additional workload to building, building departments. There, it raises the potentiality for retroactive enforcement, which there is, just to put people's minds at ease, there is clauses in there for grandfathering buildings in. A lot of folks, when they hear that new building code is being adopted, they get concerned that they're gonna have to re-site their home or cut all their trees down or whatever it is. And clauses can be built in there to, to allow for that. What it does do is it does enable and provide the ability for egregious violations to be enforced. So I think that's important to note. But one of the biggest, biggest benefits that I think the town will see from adopting a WU code is that it actually elevates our eligibility for grants. And one of the, the best ones that we should consider looking at is retrofitting. There's a lot of retrofitting grants, both at the state and the federal level, for folks to be able to retrofit their homes with non-combustible siding, redo their roofs, do mitigation projects on their home, on their properties, et cetera. But the town needs to adopt some sort of code to, to make themselves more eligible for those. And then there's just the science behind the adopting WU code. $4 benefit for every $1 cost, the retrofitting, $2, $2 to $8 for every $1 invested. And then they found with the campfire, which was that Paradise Valley, one that we talked about earlier, 51% of the structures that were built after WU code was adopted and built under WU standards, escape damage, 18% of the, only 18% of the structures prior, built prior survived. So pretty obvious the value of that. I mentioned the mitigation projects, so we met with the fire district. I have not gotten to meet with Dave Cosgrove yet. We, I know he's on vacation, we communicated a little bit. But what we've gone through is we've gone through and identified, and actually, I happened to run into the mayor this morning at the post office, and he pointed out that I missed Stone Canyon here. I didn't realize that there was town-owned property up there. But we've gone through, we're kind of quantifying the acreage, the fuel density. We took this list to the fire district last week, met with them. They're gonna provide us with some kind of assessment criteria, some specs that we should be looking at for what degree should we mitigate these to. Emily Grubler, Gubler, I think, with the fire district, she's the fuels manager for the Rocky Mountain National Park. So very knowledgeable in this field. But our, our hope here is just to start quantifying the acreage, the degree to which it needs to be mitigated, the capacity needs, so that we can bring these to you guys so that we can start getting costs associated with them, a needs associated with them, evaluate whether or not the town has funding to mitigate these, or if we need to look at grants. So that's the primary intent there. And then grants, and I know in emailing with Victoria earlier in the year, I know there's a concern about grants. I know they're, they're challenging, they're cumbersome, they come with a lot of bureaucracy and workload to the divisions. But again, I think this might be financially one of the best paths forward for us to evaluate. I know in talking with both Chris Cope, Chief Zick, Jocelyn, it sounds like Chief Zick and Victoria mentioned it as well, but there might be a need there for a town grant writer that many of the departments can use. But this could be one of their initiatives, is to, to gain some grants so that we can start tackling these. I included the FEMA wildfire grant papers, I don't know if you guys got to look through those, but again, the nice thing about the FEMA is it covers 75%. It only requires 25%, most of the other grants we've come across are 50% or less. So as, as challenging as the, the feds can be to work with, they do provide a lot of funding. And again, there are the BRIC grants in there that help with retrofitting, there's fuel mitigation grants, infrastructure, capacity building, et cetera. And then the thing, I think ultimately what we've concluded and that we hope that we can achieve here is really just getting the town to, to identify, to see the need, to see how critical and at risk the town is, and to start taking advantage of some of these, some, the grants, the fuel mitigation projects, WU code. I think response capacity is gonna be a big one. Again, that's kind of outside of our jurisdiction. But speaking with Chris Cope at the fire district, I think there's, there's opportunities that will present themselves for the fire district to improve their response. And I'm hoping that the town can advocate and encourage, encourage that as well. And then we do, just the town itself needs to be the, the namesake, the focal point that, that this effort needs. You know, we, you guys have all experienced it, you've traveled. And you know, I, before I used to say, oh, I live north of Boulder, and people would say, oh, where? And I say, I live in Lions, and everybody knew where Lions was. And it actually kind of surprised me. People know where Lions is, they love it, they all want to live here. And we need to leverage that, that political clout, I think, with some of these other agencies. Open Space, Forest Service even, I, I see it happening already with Negusi and Hickinlooper coming. And, and we need to take advantage of that to make some of these efforts happen. So that's kind of my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
I'd just like to compliment you on the presentation. And also compliment Jocelyn for sending out the, the information on the Oregon fires. I think that it's somewhat obvious that we have to implement a WU code if we do want to pursue grants. But I think that we are developing terrific relationships on, on the federal level and on the Boulder County level as well, and on the state level. So I think this is exciting, and I really think that it's well-needed at the moment because the environment's changing so much. So thank you, Roy. I think it was a really, really great presentation and eye-opening as well.
Yeah, and that's really, I think, the perspective we're trying to take is to, there's a lot of opportunities coming, a lot of things happening at the state and federal level and locally that I think the task force in the town has an opportunity to, to capitalize on.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead, sir.
Roy, would you be able to take your presentation down so we can see each other?
Yep, absolutely. I'm not a Zoom pro, firefighters are not known for their Zoom skills, so let me, there we go.
Thank you.
Well, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, um, yeah, thanks, thanks for the presentation. I find this whole thing rather frightening, especially in, in light of what happened last summer with the Cowood Fire. I took a, I took a hike up Hile shortly thereafter, and I, I think if that fire, if that wind had shifted 30 degrees, it would have come roaring right down Hile Canyon, taken out Red Gulch and swept into town. Do you see that area as particularly vulnerable to wildfires or for the spread of wildfires? In other words, the Ventura effect of Hile Valley when, when a fire gets going and the wind gets behind it?
Yeah, I mean, as, as somebody along the way cracked a dark joke that we're, we're pretty safe to the south at this point, but there's still certainly risk there. The, the fire, we have a huge fire break to the south of us now, obviously. The Lions Valley Estates and kind of that Old St. Brain Road is certainly still at risk. I know one of the, my Wildland chief drove with Chief Pishki when Cowood was happening, and they were putting the town on pre-evac. He did me the favor of calling me as he was heading up and said, I'll let you know what I see up there. And I know the biggest concern from the incident managers was the Narrows in South St. Brain, where it was, it had backed down to the river. If it crossed the river there, was there a trigger point to evacuate the town? And just geographically speaking, between the two St. Brains, right? If anything gets in there and has a west, westward wind, it's gonna threaten the town. But yeah, that, that Hile Ranch Picture Rock Trailhead, it's still quite vulnerable for anything that starts to the west of us.
Eric, just, just a follow-up question. To your knowledge, do any of the more modern house construction in town, do they have any non-combustible materials used? Here's an example, I live in a house that has cement board. I've never had cement board on a house before, it's always been cedar or clearboard. I know I have an asphalt roof, but most of the houses here in Lions Valley Park are hardy board or cement board. Is that, is that less combustible than?
Absolutely, yeah. Cement board meets non-combustible, which is what's in the WU code. So homes that are, generally homes that are newer, for insurance reasons, are built when they're in the wildfire zone, are built with that to help reduce your wildfire burden. The risk for us is how many old homes we have here. I live on Ewald. Uh, the risk for us is how many, uh, old homes we have here. Uh, I live on Ewald, uh. I'm one, you know, directly across the street from Hall Ranch. Uh, and I'm looking out my window right now to the west and directly opposite of me is, uh, a home. It's a beloved member of the community, uh, single mom. She has non-treated wood sided home, and it's the first house that any fire is gonna see. Um, it, that we get from the west. And, uh, something interesting talking to, uh, Chief Sick and Chief Pishki was. Um, that they, they mentioned to me that I, I did not know was the hydrants in the town. Uh, are rated up to six hundred GPM, uh, which is a single home. Uh, so the hydrants and the fire, fire districts, uh, response capacity cannot really go beyond a single home. Um, so if we have a fire hit one of these homes, it's a wind driven event. Uh, and we, uh, I was on the Black Forest Fire in Colorado Springs. And when the wind would blow, we were seeing basketball sized debris. Going from one home crashing through a window into another home and igniting it. And that's what's happening in these neighborhoods. Um, and the fact that our first interface with the, the wildland to the west. Is non-WUI homes is, is a huge issue. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I, I, the, you had mentioned, uh, we do have a natural fire break to the south. To, to what, to what area are you referring to?
Well, that was kind of the dark joke was the, the Cowood Fire burn scar, um, reduced all the fuels to the south of us.
Okay, but what about, what about fire, um, coming from the east and being driven over the, the ridge here? And down into the town from the east? Is that, is that a realistic threat?
Um, it's from the east, not as much. Uh, it's pretty rare for us to have those wind events. I don't know of any of those wind events that are sustained winds from the east. Um, I think probably the west and the north are the bigger concerns. So up Steamboat. Um, Stone Canyon, um, things like that. Those canyons will channel the winds and then the topography works against them as well. Um, Apple Valley, um, coming down Highway thirty-six. Uh, those, the west and the north is primarily the, the dominant winds that we see. And we saw that with, um. Have too many fire names in my, uh, in my head at this point. High Park Fire, um, to the north of us. Uh, it had several pushes that came from the north, uh, when Glen Haven was, was threatened.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Um, thank you, Mr. Legan. I'd like to thank the entire task force for doing this important work. You know, I think when we set priorities, we look at the Venn diagram of urgent and important. You know, and see where things overlap, and these are two overlapping circles. To me, this is the most urgent and important issue that faces our town. So, um, so my question is about Congressman Negus's wildfire task force. And the grants that you, um, had up on the screen. How does those puzzle pieces fit together? Does the ta- is the, is his task force initiative, do you think going to offer more possible grants? And before you answer that one final comment, and that is, in town right now, we have at least in Old North where I live. There are houses along the alley with stacks and stacks of old dry wood. That are code violations, and I think that it's time to really. Kind of put the hammer down and get people to clean that stuff up. So, um, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's the same case on Ewald. Um, yeah, so with, uh, some of the federal stuff that's happening, there's stuff happening at the federal and the state level. And I would encourage you guys to take a look if you Google Colorado Fire Commission. Um, you can see what's happening at the state level. Um, but there is a lot of money being shifted to, uh, those proactive mitigation efforts. Um, the state fund, uh, which previously used to finance the response to after a fire started. They're shifting it to, uh, pre-positioning units, and that's probably going to be more managed at the county level. Um, where, um, the, the county, the state will enable, uh, the county to make funds available. For the fire districts to upstaff and to pre-position firefighters, you know, throughout their fire district or wherever it might be. Um, at the federal level, I think, uh, it's gonna take a little while, but it's already happening. There was a grant that came up this spring, um, that was primarily fifty percent. Uh, it was being, um, facilitated by the State Forest Service. So it was fifty percent, um, uh, matching. And you can match with in-kind, so you could have volunteers come and do the mitigation work, and that can count as part of the, the town or whoever's contribution. Um, but there's gonna be a lot more coming, and that's one of the jobs of the task force and what we're trying to figure out. Um, so that we can present those to you guys. So, of, this is what's happening. Here's where we find the information. Here's the deadlines. Here's what they need. We should consider doing this. Um, so that's kind of the, the approach we're taking, but, uh, it, it is coming and it, there is a lot happening. And the, that's one of the primary projects of the task forces to, to figure that out because it's complex. Uh, if you look at that FEMA wildfire, um, grant stuff that I sent, the, the, the part of the reason I sent it and I really liked it was it. Broke down the complexity of the grant process. Um, because some of these are quite complex. And one issue that we've discussed is, uh, a lot of the town's problem. Is with, on private property, private homeowners, um, particularly up, in our interface areas. And, um, we need to, to find a way to make a grant opportunity available. Um, we, we need to handhold homeowners to some degree, right? A private homeowner is not gonna go get fuel modeling, um, you know. They're, they're not likely to go get the bids, apply for a grant. A lot of these grants are bureaucratically heavy. Um, but, uh, homeowners associations, the town, fire district. You know, they're oftentimes better positioned, uh, to be the fiduciary manager or the grant applicant. And to apply for pots of money and then to, you know, get, uh. A neighborhood or a homeowner to, to say I want to participate, right? That's a much easier, uh, process for the homeowner. So, that's kind of one of our approaches.
Administrator Simonson.
Thank you. First of all, thanks, um, Roy and your committee who's been working on this. I think we all fully understand. Um, I remember very vividly, as does I'm sure the board, we were in our initial board orientation when the fire broke out. Um, and I remember saying, uh, we gotta keep this moving along. These things can move quickly. So, I think we all understand, of course, firsthand. Um, so the board doesn't get the wrong impression. I do want you to know that, that Planner Glasgow brought this to the board. A couple of years ago, two or three years ago, that we needed to be part, to adopt a WUI. And, um, I don't really recall, maybe one of the trustees do, of why it didn't take priority at that time. But it could have been some form of no other recovery issue, but, um, now is the time. I totally agree. And we need to, um, face this head on and be good stewards, um, on behalf of the community and help our residents. To come on board with it, I think. So, um, you have full support of staff. Uh, we will. Um, you know, we will be finishing up several of our, um. Our, our grant projects at the end of this year, so it might free up. We have, um, one flood staff that would be, um, probably willing to stay on and help with grant writing. Pursuing some of this if the board sees fit is when the budget comes around. But, um, just know, Roy, you have full support of staff.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I know, and I don't know if you guys have looked at WUI code. Um, it's, it's pretty, uh, dry. Um, but I'm trying to make it as easy as possible. I went through, uh, what you guys are gonna get. And I, I gave Jocelyn the very first rough draft. Um, but it's broken down by each individual item of what the county has in place. And then there's a couple additional recommendations that the fire district, um, and I think the town could benefit from. And, um, my thought is that the planning commission, the, uh. Uh, building department can go through line item and amend it, and they can cut and, they can pick and choose which pieces they want to adopt, so. Uh, a lot of folks here adopt WUI code, and then they open the WUI code and they see that. Um, you know, you're not allowed to have a campfire in your backyard, and that's not entirely the case. Uh, we have a, there's a lot of liberty and flexibility there to, to choose how it reads.
A, a lot of code is, uh, dry, uh, uh, Roy Legan, believe me. Mayor Proton Browning.
Yeah, that, a couple of comments. One, related to short-term things and another to long-term. Short-term, I, I, I presume the task force is aware. That for each of the last three years, the board's trustees has budgeted for curbside Olympic up during the summer. Definitely, uh, mitigation being a big reason for that. Each year, it's taken a lot of additional push to actually get that done, but it's going to get done. It's not dependent upon the SFC's separate slash collection event. It's something that the board has budgeted for every year. Uh, and in fact, there's, it's being, it's gonna be addressed tonight at the meeting, as it is each year, of why hasn't it happened yet? So, we do have that in place. Um, secondly, in terms of long-term mitigation efforts, I think it's important to realize that. There are about nine vacant lots left in current, that, that houses can be built on in, in Lyons. Uh, town limits and basically zero lots left. Don't have something on them already for, uh, commercial properties. So, a building code, the building code part of WI code that would apply to new construction isn't gonna do much for Lyons. There just aren't that many lots left to build on. So it's really the retrofitting of existing structures, like you already said. Of, for example, your neighbor's house, uh, that's important. So, in that regard, could the task force kind of zero in on? With, among all the grants possibilities of what would be the best grants for doing retrofitting, because that's what we really have to look at here in Lyons.
Yeah, that's great. That's actually, uh, a great thought because I didn't know what the capacity of the town was to continue building. I knew it was not great, but, um, that's actually a really good approach. Um, a question for anybody who might know, with the, the budgeted monies for the curbside. Um, I know the last SFC meeting, there was, uh, the slash event we had scheduled, um, kind of lost. Uh, it's, it's wheels because the logistics weren't ironed out as well as they needed to be. Um, for the curbside, do we know, is it, is the SFC supposed to take point on that, or is there somebody that I should communicate with?
That's, that's town. We're talking. Yeah, Mayor Proton Browning, uh, uh, was referring to, uh, what the town does every year.
Contracted out in recent years before the flood, the town public work staff routinely did. Curbside pickup, uh, first week of each month during the summer. The chipper was lost during the flood, wasn't replaced, so it's been contracted out since then at the board's insistence. And it's separately budgeted from the SSC event, not dependent on the SSC event happening or not. It's gonna happen. Um, on its own, and there's a specific budget item for it already.
Oh, sorry. I was gonna say, one of the, one of the big things we want to look at is, uh, when I meet with Dave Cosgrove. Uh, cause is that his department? Or I know he's Parks and Rec. Is he also Public Works or?
Yes.
Um, was to look at the capacity stuff. Um, and see if we want to try to pursue a grant or, or whatever of a chipper, box trucks. Um, mo- you know, mowers that can deal with some of these bigger fields that are brush and whatnot. Um, and just, again, to get some of those costs and, and, and see how we can make it happen.
Commissioner Farrell, I know that you wanted to speak. You, you're muted, I think. No.
Try again.
There you go.
We can't hear you. I know, maybe it's your volume. While she's figuring that out, if I could just comment on that staff issue that we were just ending. Um, I talked with, uh, Mr. Cosgrove today and, um. We really feel like the, if you're wanting to open up the slash pile to the entire eight zero five four oh. That probably should happen first so that some people in town will still bring theirs there. They'll reduce the need for the curbside in town. But, um, and it would get the majority of your concerns, you know, out sooner as well, but, um. It is, it's really, they, they are two very different events. We've, I, I see Mayor Protem shaking his head. He may want curbside first, but I do think the majority of people who have the ability to move their own would bring it to the site if they could. And then do the curbside. Um. Would you like to comment?
The board budgets these funds every year. The town staff never gets around getting it done before the middle of the summer. When the wood dries out and the, and the fire risk is the greatest, it needs to be done. We've had to force the staff to do it. It was budgeted originally by the prior board over the staff's objections. It's something the board has done. Many, many people do not have the capability. Of loading their limbs into a truck or a trailer and bringing them down to a slash event. That's why curbside is so important. It was one of the most valued services that the town provided to its residents. One of the most appreciated services pre-flood. The staff didn't replace the chipper. This public works department has dropped the ball on doing it internally like it used to do. So the board picked it up, budgeted this money, we contracted out each year. Each year, we have to ask two or three times, why hasn't it happened? When is it scheduled? When is it gonna be done? Who's in charge? Year after year after year.
I'm fully aware of all of those things, Mayor Proton.
Excuse to put it off until the SSC does some flash again.
No, 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 they're two separate events.
I'm still talking, Administrator Simonson. It needs to be done during high, higher risk season, which is now. It should have already been contracted. It should have already been done, and it needs to get done. But we have to do this every year, and I say the same thing every year, and I'm tired of the staff not doing what the board budgeted to be doing.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Farrell, can we, uh, see if your, uh, volume is sufficient so that we can hear you? We still can't hear you. I'm sorry. Um.
I will, uh, kind of speak to some of the stuff that was, uh, addressed there as, uh, we, speaking with Kim, we did. Talk about some of those challenges and concerns, and one, uh, approach we talked about was the slash collection event. Being, um, woody material over six inches in diameter and the curbside being under six inches. Um, and, and then at that point being able to, you know, if there are, um. You know, individuals that are not capable, uh, to get the over six inches off the property. The, the curbside event might help us at least identify those that are, um, constrained and, and I have a trailer. Uh, I know the task force would, you know, the fire districts has even offered up some, uh, ch- chances to help, so. Um, I think if, if we could just get it started, uh, and, and qualify it by, uh, the diameter of the debris. That will help self-limit some of that concern.
Good. Uh, I appreciate the presentation. We have another presentation. I want to thank, uh, um, Commissioner Farrell for attending. And you, Roy, and, uh, our new, uh, chairman of the, uh, uh, PCDC, uh. Uh, David Hamrick. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We'll wait for, uh, Administrator Simonson to come on with, uh, with, uh, the, uh. Update regarding, uh, grant opportunity projects and matching funds. Administrator Simonson? You're muted.
You're muted.
There you go.
I don't have either, um, Tracy nor Kim available that have helped work on this project. So I will do my best to answer questions. Um, tonight, we wanted to just kind of give the board. An overview of, um, grants that are currently being worked on very high level, just quickly so everyone understands. And then move on to this, um, American Rescue Plan Act funding. So that you might be a little more familiar with that as we need to be making decisions over the coming months about how you would like. To spend that. Um, the, uh, let me get to my right now. Right now, uh, we have seven projects that are, uh, grants that are in motion. Um, ranging from, uh, the Ped Bridge, Main Street Lighting. US brought, US thirty-six and Saint Brain Trail will be coming in front of you in two, in two weeks. The Longs Peak Drive improvements, the comp plan, and then the Black Bear Hole Second Avenue Trailhead improvements and restroom. So, those total around six million dollars. Most of which have a deadline to spend in, uh, between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So, uh, that's just. and 2022. So that's just to kind of let you know what's out there at the moment. I'm going to share my screen now. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Let's see if I can get it into different format here. I might just leave that over there. So the American Rescue Plan, we put a lot of materials in your packet. I know it's a lot to get through. So I'd like to just give you a little synopsis in case you didn't have time. The American Rescue Plan was of course signed in to to law in March of this year following the pandemic. It started as a 1.9 trillion dollars earmarked for government for government recovery at following the pandemic. Of that 1.9 trillion, Colorado will be receiving 3.8 billion dollars through the ARPA bill. Two million of it is to be directed in 2021 and the remainder to be directed in 2022 legislature. Of that 2.8, oh, I want to show you this too. So right down here. So of that amount, 3.8 billion is going to the state of Colorado. 62 million is going to Boulder County alone. And then of that, based on the allocations and the formulas that were developed under the plan, Lyons will only be getting 550, I shouldn't say only, will be getting $550,000 direct. We have already received our first deposit. We got it last week of $275,000. The other $275,000 will come in 2021. Okay, so let's go back to that other one. Oops. So we have started working on, there are four categories that this money can be spent on. And the Colorado Recovery Plan has basically said it's going to go towards strengthening small business, revitalizing infrastructure, supporting Colorado families. Oh, I guess there's five. Investing in rural Colorado and workforce development. And so the town has staff have been putting together lists from our capital projects as well as other discussions of ways to allocate these funds so that the board will be prepared when the time comes. The money must be encumbered by the end of 2024 and must be spent by December of 2026. I don't think we're going to have problems with that one. So eligible options and projects for the direct funding to the town are some of the following. Premium pay to essential workers. This has major restrictions. This is positions. These are for people who worked throughout the pandemic, but not for people like town employees. It's more for police, hospital workers, people like that. So we really don't have anything there. There's something called provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue. And so they call this reduction revenue. And we do have from the state of Colorado, we do have some guidance on what that looks like. They are saying how the state of Colorado is going to apply this is a reduction in revenue is calculated by comparing actual revenue in each of the four calendar years prior to the pandemic and then compared to 2020. And then there's a formula. We ran a really brief, high level on this. We actually feel that the Parks Parks Department would probably be eligible for loss of revenue if you wanted to apply that toward it. None of the utilities, of course, would be eligible, but that is something that is it is a direct, you can just spend it on this without going through a bunch of hoops. The third one to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic consequences. And then lastly, investment in water, sewer and broadband. So it's very specific. This isn't just all infrastructure. It's not streets. It's not capital projects that you just have have there, but these are some of the other more details about what you can spend it on. Here's that loss of revenue. So you we do have about $320,000 of lost revenue that appears to be eligible. If you wanted to spend it toward that, it would just go back into the reserves of those funds to help them. Okay. The other, as we talked about, you can do deferred maintenance that was not able to take effect in 2020 because we cut our budgets. So these are some of the specific categories they have identified. Again, many of these are not really as pertinent to us being small and contracting our services as they are for the county. And then this negative economic consequences and water, sewer and broadband. And at the bottom, this is really important to note, the federal and state guidance is just just like during the pandemic, it is being released regularly. So we have staff attending each of these different working groups to make sure that we're familiar with what is eligible. And I think the bigger picture here, I know the board's already talked about using some of these funds potentially and you're going to talk about it tonight. Some of the funds may be toward water and sewer, stormwater infrastructure with Summit. But that is just, that's one of the the items we've talked about. We cannot, we did get guidance recently that we cannot use these as matching funds to another federally funded project. Now, we could use it for a go cope project, but most of those don't fit in these categories. But we cannot use it to match US thirty-six or Highway seven. Okay. Questions so far? On any of that or projects we have outstanding?
Just to Rogan.
Yeah, thank you Administrator. So I I think it was the second to last slide. I noticed the phrase pay dash go, and I just don't know what that means. Do you know, can you explain what that is?
What was the what was the acronym?
It was pay dash go.
Oh, pay as you go. Pay, yeah. It's it's where it is two things. It has a couple of different interpretations, but we can get more specific. In some, it can be that you pay as things are completed because this is incremental funding. You know, if you did a part one of a project now and a part two next year. I don't believe it has any, it's not a reimbursement strategy at all.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So we can use, so we can use the funds for any water or sewer project.
Not necessarily any water and sewer project, but certainly we're we need more guidance on that DOLA. So each of the different state agencies has their pot of money. You know, workforce development, DOLA has them, housing has it. All the different groups have hundreds of millions of dollars to allocate. They are each now working through what it's going to be their guidance. So all we have right now is our 550,000 to spend over the coming years. Everything else will apply for, just like we do now through DOLA, through Division of Housing, those sorts of things. The bigger and and they don't have all their guidance out yet. I think the bigger opportunity for the town of Lyons to capture these funds is really at the county level. Boulder County is going to have the $62 million of funds that they need to expend in the next few years. And they are having, they have started a work group. They're going to do some listening sessions October through December from the public to hear where the public feels there's needs that's not been met. Then they said in January, they are going to start formulating different categories that they want their 62 million to go for. Now, we have to remember that I'm this 62 million is just Boulder County. Longmont gets its own 27 million. City of Boulder gets its own tens of millions. So our biggest opportunity is through the Boulder County money. So I have they will be inviting the board and probably staff to at different levels between October and this January timeframe to start telling them, what is it you feel like we need? And so that will be our chance. They already know that, you know, we would would entertain more affordable housing, potentially out in Eastern Corridor, but to do that, we'd need water, sewer to be looped out there. You know, they 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 are aware that we still have millions and millions of dollars of stormwater needs. Now we could add wildfire in potentially if we can fit that into public health and safety somewhere. But but it's not well defined yet. So it's continuing to move, but it's just, I want you to understand the framework. Our money is 550 and that's ours to spend before 2024. The county is where the big dollars will be.
So so let me rephrase my question. Instead of any water or sewer project, we could obviously spend it to upgrade the older distribution system in town. Correct?
It could go toward our, yes, if if that's probably going to be through the state through a DOLA program. I don't know that Boulder County would help us with our inside city limits, water and sewer.
Okay.
But but out in our planning area, I think that's a strong possibility.
All right.
And then in your packet, I did include our most up-to-date capital improvements list so that and I can share my screen really quick again, screen three. This is some of our potential ARPA projects, not known for sure yet, but we've kind of categorized categorized them by wastewater, stormwater, which we think are going to be their the most eligible. Stormwater and then water, we still have a couple PRVs to do. You can see the list is long and then broadband, affordable housing, loss of revenue, small business support. I think everything from that line and above will be eligible. I do not think that electric, unless it's a solar project, electric general fund or parks will be nearly as competitive. So these are some projects you guys can start taking a look at so that when the county is ready to have those conversations this fall, we we probably need to figure out a mechanism that this board feels comfortable moving forward with to be one voice, you know, to Boulder County.
Yeah, we can. We can definitely have a strategy session in regard to that. It's very exciting to have funds of this amount available to us. So.
You know, and all of our other collaborative projects with the county, when we do the formula of all the municipalities within the county, you know, Lyons usually ends up with like oh, one to two percent. So if you look at that as 62 million, that might be, might be kind of some baseline. And then, of course, all of the different state departments. But this is again, kind of piggybacking up what Roy said about the need for grant writing. This is going to be another example of when DOLA comes out with something or Division of Housing or Public Health, we're going to have to be able to compete with with the bigger communities and we might it might benefit us to keep that in mind.
Any other questions, Mayor Protem?
Just just a quick comment in terms of where best to allocate these funds and projects. I think it's important to look at the relative financial strength of our various funds. Of all of them, the Parks Fund is probably in the best shape. The Electric Fund seems to be doing okay. General Fund with sales tax collections considerably this year is getting in better shape than it has been. It's had minimal reserves in the last couple of years. The fund that's really the weakest is the Water Wastewater Fund. And so to the extent we're getting outside funds that would relieve some of the potential stresses on our existing town funds, to me, that's that's something we really have to look at. Water sewer projects are expensive and our fund is not in great shape. The wastewater component of it is actually in the red. So that's just an observation. That's that's one place we probably look for projects is show up the weakest funds.
Any other comments?
I just have a comment on the we've talked a lot about grant writers on the fire mitigation. It's been brought up again. So Tom Administrator Simonsen, the grants that we are applying for have successfully won many of them. Those are those are done by your staff, correct? I mean, we haven't hired any outside grant writers. Have we ever hired any outside grant writers?
All of our grants have been written by existing staff or flood recovery staff.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But but also I have the remaining flood recovery staff all go away at the end of the year. Tracy, Erica and Suwa Willie are all done at the end of the year. Their funding runs out.
So based on your experience, what would a the position of a grant writer, would that be a full-time position or would it be on an as-needed basis? You know, would that be a town town employee with full benefits?
I think you could set it up several different ways. You know, some communities contract and then they pay them a percentage of whatever grants they acquire. That some do it that way. In our case, you know, we not we need them not only to write it, we need them to monitor and do the grant reporting throughout the year, work with finance to make sure it's all recorded correctly. So for us, you know, depending on how many we would get, I mean, if if we have the seven that are in motion now, that'll be closing out next year. And then let's say we get three or four more. And that's a pretty full-time job for one or two part times, maybe. And again, it kind of, we have so much good, you know, local support, you know, someone like a Roy would certainly help us, I would think, with that type of a grant and and, you know, we use our other staff. Aaron knows the water and sewer, so he has to write the meat of it and we we all just work together as a team to, you know, put together a good application.
Based based on what I've heard in this workshop, I think it's a it's worth looking into a funded position for 2022 going forward.
Well, we're going to start budgeting here in the next month or so, so we'll be talking about it.
There you go. Anything else? Nothing else? Well, we get to take a little bit of break before our meeting comes. We'll see everybody at seven o'clock sharp. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the Monday, July nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one Lyons Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Angelo.
Present.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Present.
Trustee Lowell.
Present.
Trustee Rogan.
Present.
Trustee Caravis.
Present.
Trustee Wa.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Please all rise and recite the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in.
This is the opportunity that we all take, uh, um, for a reflective moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Um, at this time, I would just like to make, uh, an amendment, uh, to the agenda because it wasn't noticed. And that said, uh, under boards and commissions, uh, Chair, uh, Lauren Click would like to, uh, present the Board of Trustees with a LAHC update. Is that acceptable to everybody? Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Rogan, you made the initial motion? To approve the agenda?
I did.
Okay. And you, and you have no objections? Does any other board member have an objection to amending the agenda? That'll be added to the agenda. Do we need to vote on that, uh, addition individually counsel?
Yeah, we need to vote on the amendment and then on the agenda unless the first and the second would like to incorporate that into the original motion.
Trustee.
I impact, I impact you. Yes, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
I have a separate amendment.
Okay.
At that point, we should probably vote on amendments individually then.
Okay, then, then we'll vote on, uh, on the amendment that I, uh, put forward that was seconded. In regard to allowing, uh, a, uh, presentation by the LAHC. I'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Trustee Caravis.
Aye.
Trustee Wa. I saw him, but I just didn't hear him. And then Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Uh, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, Mayor Proton, you had an additional amendment?
Yes, I would like to amend the agenda by, to delete, uh, item Roman numeral twelve two relating to the property at four oh one Second Avenue. So that's my motion to delete that from the agenda.
I'll second that.
And the reason for my motion is that we had a thorough discussion of this, um, uh, property, uh, less than a month ago. It's not the first discussion we've had of it, had on it. We gave clear direction to staff, set a deadline and specified what would happen if the deadline wasn't met. And I don't think we need to take this up again. And I think unnecessarily adds to our agenda time. So I moved to delete that item.
Any discussing? Uh, hearing none, I'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Trustee Caravis.
Aye.
And Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Uh, the amendment passes unanimously. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? I was, I was saying none will vote on the, uh, agenda as amended. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Trustee Caravis.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Uh, the, the agenda is approved as amended. Now is the opportunity, uh, under audience business for anybody in the audience to address the Board of Trustees on any item except for, uh, our second readings tonight. Because there will be an opportunity, uh, since they are public hearings, to address those issues at that time. Is there anybody that wishes to address the Board of Trustees at this time?
Yes.
Uh, you name an address for the record, please.
I'm in three oh six Evans Lyons. And I wanted to announce that, uh, people are getting wondering when we were going to have build days next year. And we'd like to have it, say, the fourth Saturday of June, which is June twenty-fifth. So we can announce to alumni and that, that we'd be coming and having their reunions. And hope the town will put in some money for the budget and to carry on like they've been. So thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm sure staff will take that up. Would anybody else wish to address the Board of Trustees at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Benita Yoder, four oh one Second Avenue Lyons, which that was removed from the agenda. So I'm appearing here a bit on audience comments. And there was three things. The first is that I think the thirty days was an unrealistic deadline because I can't just have somebody go tear the deck off. I wish I could. I have somebody who would just go do that. But I have to have a demolition permit and in order to do that, I've been told that I have to have the, the plans with it. Cause from a safety matter, just to tear the deck off and how do you, you know, secure the door or replace the deck and, uh, contacted the architect who was originally involved, who's booked out for up to six weeks, suggested a structural engineer. The ones she knew are booked out for weeks. And if I could just have somebody go rip the deck off in the middle of the night, it would have been off. But I have to have a demolition permit and a building permit and a flood development permit, all three. And I can't get the building permit until I get a flood development permit. And I got to get the, it, it's all tied together. It's not quite as easy as just, now that all eyes are on it, sending somebody out with a crowbar to yank it apart. If there were a way to do that, I wish there were. But I wanted to bring that up and that's why I had asked for an agenda item with having some additional time. Plus I understand, I don't know, this is just word in the street, that it takes a while to get permits approved in a town. But, uh, I think that's a, that deadline is a setup for failure. But that was the first thing. The second thing, as I was talking to a contractor today to say, hey, do you know any structural engineers who, could engineer a deck who have time? And he said in Boulder County, they have a tracking system for their permits. So it was just something to think about for the town to have a tracking system. We don't get in a situation where I did, where I didn't get, where something fell through the cracks and I didn't get notified. And I guess from what he was saying in Boulder County, they say, if you don't hear from us by this date, then contact us. And they notify people by email, but it's just a thought about, uh, some kind of a possible systemic change. So that, that doesn't happen. And then thirdly, I am considering, and I think it's okay to say this because your, your attorney is here. Considering, uh, filing for a judicial review of the town, Alliance, the Board of Trustees' decision from June twenty-one. And for two reasons or two accounts, one is that I hadn't received notification on that permit till after it had expired, flood development. permit till after it had expired, flood development permit. And secondly, that I think the thirty days is an unrealistic and unreasonable deadline, given everything involved. And if that happens, I, uh, am still very happy to work directly with town staff on permits and such, provided Attorney Ditman, uh, gives his approval for that. Because technically, since I'm an attorney, I'm not to have direct contact with someone without, uh, that, you know, quote, opposing party unless I have permission of council on the other side. So I'm just bringing that up, that I, I certainly would not want to increase the town's hourly fees for Mr. Ditman's bill by having to have everything go through him. He approves, I, I'd be happy to communicate directly with town staff if I do file such a, a review. Which, quite honestly, I've been working on this afternoon, and I've been, when I, I heard that I was removed from the, going to be removed from the agenda, which I appreciate that the town administrator reached out to me to let me know. But if the avenues are closed down, then I may have to go to a higher level of review if I can't communicate on this level. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Uh, is there anybody else who wishes to address the Board of Trustees at this time? Uh, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, there's no one with their hand raised.
Thank you very much. Sergeant Chris, Boulder County Sheriff's Office reports.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, so I'll start out with a quick update on some, uh, activity in the parks. Obviously, we're getting, uh, very busy, and we've only had a few very minor issues that our deputies are handling quite well. Relationships with the park host are, are going great. Um, no real major problems to speak of there. They're busy with people in the parks doing what people in the parks should be doing. Later on this week, uh, we're set to have a quick meeting, um, with Chief Zick and some staff in the Town of Lyons to try to streamline a little bit our protocols for water rescue callouts. Primarily, um, and, and I, I'll kind of repeat this as I spoke with Chief Zick about this. In no way, shape, or form do we want to become complacent about not believing a water rescue is a water rescue. So, um, but there are some things I think that, uh, we have noticed over the past few, uh, where they've turned out just to be lost kids or kids going down the river and getting out at a different spot and being unaccounted for for a certain amount of time. Obviously, we push the big red button, and, uh, that's what we do, but it does, uh, tap into a lot of resources. I'm also working on some communication upgrades for our radio systems within the park. That's always been a bone of contention. As soon as I send a deputy into the park to get kind of eyes on, and we're all downstream, it's next to impossible to get adequate information passed along up and down the river. Um, so we're working on some bugs like that just to get everything worked out. Fortunately, this summer has been, knock on wood, uh, very benign. We've had, had our share of water rescues, but they've all been non-water rescues, so that's a good thing. Uh, we are gearing up for the upcoming festival weekend. I have my final, uh, incident action plan hammered out. I'm going to review it later on tonight and, uh, send that out to, uh, you guys that, uh, need to be in the loop on our staffing for the festival, the, uh, the cone pattern. It will be pretty much business as usual, uh, that we've had the last time we, the festivals were up and running with a few minor changes and things like that, based on some permitting and things. But, uh, our goal is always to, uh, learn something each year and make it more smoother and, uh, better each year going on. Uh, the last thing I'll update everybody on is, um, the possibility of my movement out of Lyons at the end of the year based on a policy within a department, uh, for mandatory rotations in, uh, contract-type towns and extracurricular activities that sergeants are able to do. So I'm in my fifth year at Lyons, and, uh, it's been five awesome, great years, and I would, uh, very much like to stay an additional year. That will kind of swing me out of our policy, uh, with the department. However, there's some clauses going on right now where, um, we're looking at the application pool and things like that. And there's a, there's a strong chance that I can petition to hang on for another year in the town. Obviously, if everybody wants to keep me here. Uh, one of the, the rhymes and reasons I'd like to stay is kind of the, well, obviously, the relationships that we've built, um, I've been here five years, and this is a kind of a critical year as well. There's a lot of new things coming down the pike. Uh, we're trying to reopen from COVID, getting everything back on track. Um, it would be helpful to have somebody, uh, in town that, you know, kind of rode out the storm and has been here and done it. So, um, I will keep you guys updated as soon as I know it might be a few weeks before that ultimate decision's made. But, um, I appreciate the, the support. So that is all I have for tonight.
And I want to poll the board on, uh, their view in regard to this. Trustee Lowell, how would you feel about, uh, Sergeant Crist remaining for an additional year?
Of course, of course, for an additional five years if possible.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem?
Experience is valuable, yes.
Trustee Rogan?
Yeah, I was going to push for ten years, actually, Sergeant.
Are you hearing all this, William?
Uh, I, I love it. I thank you all very much for the support.
Trustee Wa.
I concur with my colleagues.
Trustee Caravus?
Same.
And I, I will just tell you that I took the initiative, uh, to send, uh, an email this afternoon. Basically, uh, reiterating the position that the board and I'm sure many people in town would be unanimously in support of, uh, you staying as long as you wish, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank, thank you all very much for the vote of confidence. It, it means a great deal to me, and, uh, I love being up here, and, uh, I strive to, uh, put the town first always and the, uh, what's important to the town and the people up here. So thank you all very much.
You always have, sir, and, and as I always say, please stay safe.
Thank you.
Um, next is trustee reports, and, uh, I'll do my report first. I usually don't, but I'm going to tonight. I understand frustration. And I understand, uh, situations that can cause tension. But the only thing that I would wish that we could do is that among ourselves be a little more civil. If nothing else, in tone, we're entitled to disagree. We're entitled to make, um, points of view known, but I think it really affects, uh, morale and, and not just staff morale, but my morale, when we can't be a little kinder to one another. So that's all I'm asking us to do. And I'm, and I'm going to put a please on top of that because it reflects on us as a governing body. I had a very interesting, uh, week. I got to meet with, uh, Karen McCormick, who is our state representative. Uh, it was a really great meeting. She's wonderful. Uh, she's a veterinarian by trade. She knocked off a pretty, uh, radical opponent, let me just put it that way. And, uh, also is, uh, on the Agriculture Committee, so they're going to do a, uh, a, a topsoil revitalization program that may come in handy, uh, for, uh, some of our, uh, uh, projects in town that we'll deal with that. The LAHC meeting went well. Um, obviously, there was a mix-up in regard to, uh, the timing of, the larger, uh, uh, wood recycling, uh, but we'll straighten it out. The charm, uh, a waste program is still on and will be, uh, advertised on the, uh, uh, town, uh, e-blasts when that's, uh, in progress. Then, um, the LAHC, uh, LAHC meeting was quite interesting because, uh, to face, uh, members of the, uh, LAHC, uh, and, uh, actually oppose a couple of, uh, their goals, uh, was, uh, quite interesting, uh, to be able to, uh, be honest with them and, uh, hear their, uh, objections to my position. But out of those discussions, and this is very preliminary, very preliminary, we'll have to do a lot of research. We'll have to, we'll have to, you know, have people submit, uh, um, paperwork. Yes, yes, proposals in regard, uh, and, and every entity is entitled to participate in that particular endeavor. And, uh, eventually, uh, we'll make a decision. What I'm talking about is, uh, utilizing, if the capability exists, the, uh, depot building. I also mentioned, uh, that, uh, that Mayor Pro Tem Browning, and I had discussed, uh, maybe sharing the responsibility of being liaisons to the, to the LAHC. And they were very, very, uh, positive in that regard. And I think that the Mayor Pro Tem could offer them, uh, exceedingly valuable, uh, legal advice. Let me just put it that way. Um, and, uh, we haven't met, uh, the Student Advisory Council hasn't met, uh, because everybody's been out of town and it's, you know, and it's summer break. But we'll be meeting this Friday, and I'll have an update, uh, from them, uh, at the next meeting. Uh, so I'll go, I'll go through the screen now. Uh, Trustee Lowell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know I'll be absent from the August second and sixteenth board meetings. I might get back in time for the August sixteenth one, but that's a travel day. Uh, you know, I made these plans seven months ago in concert with the rest of my family, so I apologize for my absence in advance. I'm going to take to heart Mayor Angelo's words early on in his, uh, in his briefing. But I feel compelled to make a comment. Uh, I'll try to be polite. You know, before every board meeting, I take the page, I'm going to write my notes down on, and I scribe the number six hundred and fifty-five at the top of the page. That's how many residents voted for me in the election. Uh, granted, there wasn't much of a choice, seven candidates for six positions, but they did check the box by my name, and I felt honored. And I feel obligated to those people. You know, I've had some time to reflect on the recusal motion that was put forward by Trustee Miller and seconded by Trustee Rogan at the last meeting. It may never have occurred to them, or any of you who hold a different opinion than I do on the summit issue, that many of these people were well aware of my opposition to this project. They agreed, and that's why someone checked the box next to my name. It'd be a sad day when this board forces a trustee to recuse himself or herself because they hold an opinion of and espouse ideas that the majority of the board doesn't agree with. I may be uncertain, but I'm pretty sure that would be something not called democracy. I'm grateful to fellow board members, Mayor Angelo, Mayor Pro Tem Browning, and Trustees Wa and Caravus upheld the democratic process and saw fit to vote against the recusal motion. By the way, later in this meeting, I am going to make suggestions and comments on the summit project. It's the expectation of some of those six hundred and fifty-five residents who put me in this seat. If some of you think that some kind of, quote, prejudice or bias on my part, then just mute me and don't listen. The rest of you may just want to listen and judge my comments on their merit instead. I'm not going to say anymore on the subject, and I hope we can let this thing rest. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Browning?
The, um, PRC had to reschedule its, uh, regular monthly meeting. I think they're actually meeting tonight contemporaneously with this board, so I don't have a report on them. But I'll get their minutes and report, uh, at the next meeting. That's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Rogan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to start by thanking Trustee Lowell for his comments and points are well taken. So I want you to understand that I hear you. Um, I would like to begin, um, like I always do by saying what I'm grateful for. And today, I'm actually super grateful to the folks at Riverbed for making, um, yoga available to the community on Sunday mornings. For everybody who's listening, I got to say it was a great class, it was a beautiful setting, and it's much, much appreciated. Um, the EVC and the HVC are both meeting on Wednesday, one in the morning and one in the evening, so that's upcoming. Um, and then, uh, um, to put a finer point on Mayor Angelo's opening remarks, from a personal perspective, I need to say that I find the hostility displayed by Mayor Pro Tem towards Administrator Simonson in the workshop tonight to be completely inappropriate, especially in a professional setting. And I would remind all of us that we all deserve respect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Trustee Caravus?
Uh, this coming Wednesday will be the next UEB meeting at the last UEB meeting. I'll hit, hit some quick points. I believe, uh, Director Aaron Kaplan's staff report, uh, will indicate a little bit more greater detail about some of the things that are discussed. The Long Speed Project that we've all been working on or aware of, as we know, has, uh, high costs and possibly dilute start, delayed start time for January, January of twenty twenty-two. And also due to these high costs, there was a plan to bury the electrical lines going up that hill. Uh, the plan will be to still put in, in bury the conduit for those lines and, uh, hopefully find money later to, uh, run the, run the electrical lines down that conduit. Uh, the new census meters are going in and continue to report well. Census, we stored, they stored two months of data for us in the, uh, in the head-end equipment. Uh, we need continuing savings. I think, uh, Chairman Kerr is working on that. It's found a way, uh, a much less expensive solution to that for us. The census warrant charged us, I believe, Aaron, it was upwards of ten, twelve thousand dollars a year to store data for us. And, uh, year to year to year, that data would accumulate quickly. So he seems to find a way that we can store that data and dump it onto our servers for the town, and we'll have access to that. The UEB will, the, the director of staff will have access to that. Also discussed in the meeting was a request by the library to, uh, add rooftop solar onto their, uh, library building. It was a twenty-five point five kilowatt rooftop solar. It goes over the amount, uh, that is allowed without a review. But it also could jeopardize, or was thought it could jeopardize, the maximum amount we could use ourselves with means current limits. It looks like, uh, we got some information. I think Aaron might touch on that later this evening and report that maybe that does not go against an individual's personal, and even a small business's personal, uh, own system does not go against our cap. So hopefully that stays true. That is in the twenty eighteen, uh, policy books of Maine. And I, I think they are reviewing, they are renewing those or redoing those, so what's going to come out for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we don't know. But like I said, I think Aaron will have more information on that. Also, on this upcoming meeting's, uh, agenda, we'll be discussing upgrading, uh, single phase to, uh, three-phase service in town and whether that's going to require, uh, additional investment fees. Just because, you know, the business adds or if we just as utility take care of that. Unfortunately, twenty twenty hindsight being a great thing, we did not run Phase Three power down High Street when we had it open because there was really no need to, or it was a notice. Aaron Kaplan, as he's took over, uh, as Director of Utilities, uh, not only hit the floor or hit the street running as he took that position, he kind of had to hit it in a sprint. And not a forty-yard dash, but he's in a mile-plus sprint still, catches up and go through all this stuff. So we are reviewing going over, and he's doing a great job, and that will be discussed. And Phase Three Power, for those that don't know, is just a, you can use a lot more load, it costs a lot more money to run wires, transformers, but, uh, it allows businesses to operate, uh, using much higher loads. And, uh, of course, that's good for our business community when people come in and do things, so. So they're going to figure that out for us and I'm sure we'll see it in the, in the coming months. I do believe that is it at this time.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Warren, are you available for your trustee report?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was eating some dinner. I didn't have a chance to do it and I didn't think anybody needed to watch me chew. So the PCDC met in a workshop after adding a new member last week. So thank you for that nomination and appointment, Mayor Angelo. We have a quarterly sprint meeting tomorrow, so we'll be kind of focusing on what we need to focus on. And I've also been working with Paul Dryer from the Economic Vitality Commission on an Eastern Corridor Committee. We are looking for interested citizens to, maybe one or two more to join us. So I'll just put that plea out now. You know, I, I will try to honor trustee Rogan's suggestion that we say something that we're grateful for. And I'm grateful for the river. I've been going in it every day this week. And I'll tell you, it's really nice to have that as a resource in town. The last thing that I'll say is that I agree, and as someone who often is probably not as civil as I need to, I'm, I'm working very hard to do that. As someone who also doesn't agree with trustee Browning very often, I will say, while his tone was, was harsh perhaps today, I concur. I find that we have, there are several topics that we have to remind staff on. It is almost, you know, July is two-thirds of the way over and we're still talking about what the plan might be. Just find it very frustrating. I think we could go back, you know, I think the discussion about the sale of the property that's on the agenda tonight is also a topic that this board has had to ask for updates and status on. And I think it's a recurring theme. So I would like us to perhaps watch our tone, but at the same time, at the same issue. We get a lot of things, it has to be decided at that meeting because it's due on Wednesday. And this is not one of those things. This is something that we know and, you know, I think it's, I think it's interesting to say how much we support fire mitigation and that, you know, in a meeting, but then the actions don't really support that. So I would like the rest of this board to, to be reminded that we, we make these decisions and sit on these six-hour meetings and make decisions and give staff direction. And we shouldn't have to ask the status of that on a recurring basis or a reminder of, we asked you to do this. And so I'm, I'm anxious for an update with regard to when we will be doing branch pickup and slash piles and whatnot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Okay, boards and commissions. I'll read this, Madam Clerk. Leaf, Cherie Moreau, Mental Health Awareness. Cherie, the florist yours.
Hello. Thank you for the invitation to speak tonight. I guess the reason I'm here is basically to introduce myself to you guys and, and let you know the work that I'm doing with Leaf. I know you guys all know what Leaf is, so. And, and just kind of to emphasize the, the importance that kind of stabilizing our community and keeping mental health at the forefront is right now and, and let you guys know what I'm doing. I'm doing individual and group counseling. I'm also doing free classes on Thursdays that teach life skills. A big topic of conversation in those group meetings has just been coming back out into the world and being around people. And just the stressors that, that I think all of us feel on some level for, for doing that right now. And the classes that I teach talk about building emotional intelligence, building stronger personal relationships. And, and also just developing emotional regulation, better ways to cope when in distress, things like that. And, and a lot of my clients have been talking about, one of the topics on the table is also suicide and suicide awareness. And, and just, and I guess another thing that, that I'd like to throw out there is that myself with Leaf have a really big like community-based idea of what mental health should be. That it shouldn't just be an individual in a room with a therapist, that when things happen to our community, to sort of like gather the community, get together in order to process and, and talk about things. So, so I'm Cherie. I work for Leaf. I'm their mental health therapist. And back in 2019, Leaf didn't have a mental health program. I was volunteering for Leaf and when they got a new executive director, we decided to launch one. So I'm kind of a one-man show over at the nonprofit, doing therapy, developing a curriculum so that Leaf will continue, even if I'm not there somewhere in the future, not that I'm planning on going anywhere, but right now. But, you know, just so that they have a really solid-based curriculum in place for a mental health program. And, and, and we're also looking to expand the program by taking on a couple of interns. I'm thinking about going to classes, become a supervisor so that maybe we can, I can supervise some interns for maybe like Naropa or CU so that we can have a broader expansion of services for people. I myself have been pretty busy. I have a lot of clients. And I know, I was asked to, to just kind of give my information here to, in case anybody has any questions about the program, concerns, want to talk, know somebody that needs to talk. Even if my client bucket is full, one of Leaf's like main goals is to leave no one behind if somebody's asking for help. So what I've done a lot on my own time, like as a volunteer, is basically channel people to where they need to be. Like I'll find them the resources that they need or, or maybe a specific type of counselor that they, that they may need, like a bereavement counselor or something like that. So I'm pretty proud of that, just on a personal basis of just like, you know, making sure that no one is left behind, that they do have somewhere to go. So I will give you my information. I don't know why I thought we were meeting in person tonight. So I had business cards, but I will just like tell you my information right now in case anyone wants to talk to me further or, or if you have any questions at all. So my phone number, and this is a phone number I do give to my clients. So it's a textable number. It's confi-, oh, everything's totally confidential too, completely. And that's really, really important in a small town like this. I mean, I seriously take that to heart, the, the whole confidentiality thing. Like if somebody talks to me, no one else will know it. So my phone number is 720-612-9774. And I'll say that again. It's 720-612-9774. And my email address is mentalwellness, all one word, at leaflyons, L-E-A-F-L-Y-O-N-S dot org. And again, that's mentalwellness@leaflyons.org. And I check those all the time. The phone I carry with me, my work phone. So I don't know. I guess that's, I guess that's my, my spiel there. Thank you for inviting me to give it. And if anybody has any questions right now, I'm here.
Are there any questions or comments for Cherie? I have stated in the past, Cherie, that I am thankful for you. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is a commission report from Lauren Click of LAHC. Lauren, you have the floor.
Hi, thanks so much, everybody. It's nice to see you. Hold on one second, please. I'm just going to share, here we go. As usual, I want to share just a few little images with you and things. My name is Lauren Click. I am Chair of the Lions Arts and Humanities Commission. Thank you so much for having me, Mayor and trustees and administrator. I will start that I am grateful for our two new liaisons. I kept asking for a while and I'm super appreciative. Thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. We really like the support, the in-person support. And so I'm just presenting tonight to take a little pressure off our liaisons and also I just like to see all of you, let's be honest. And thank you for everybody who joined our, our opening last week. If you haven't seen the works yet in the Town Hall, please go check them out and at the library. So some brief updates. I will be super quick. I've only got four slides with just some info and some images. The most, some really exciting news is that this artwork from Emmett Coligan has been donated to the town's collection, which is an incredible gift and donation. It's presently in the triangle coming into the town. We'll be moving it around and we are absolutely thrilled to add this to the collection. The LAHC, the LAHC will be applying to manage the depot after the building is no longer in use, as the mayor mentioned. Just to give you a long-term heads up, the LAHC, together with local business owner Betsy Burton, are exploring becoming a creative district. This is also a very long-term process and we'll be hoping to host a workshop with you in the future to answer questions and, and run through things. But I just, we want to give you a super far advanced update so you all know what's going on. The History Colorado Grant for the youth sculpture was declined as ineligible, not because they didn't like it. They actually told us to, they strongly recommended that we apply for another, so we are and we hope to hear back about that very soon. Also, we have earmarks and funds to send several members of the Colorado, several of our members to the Colorado Creative Industries Conference. It's an incredible annual conference and a great way for get people to get to know what's happening in the arts community more broadly in Colorado. Coming soon, we have another partial sponsor for our sculpture program, which is super exciting. I'll be showing you these images in a second. St. Brain's Market, thank you so much for a partial sponsorship on a sculpture that's going in front of their building. Also, Etica Patch's work will be soon installed on the Gatherings Building. So right there, it's going to be full of art, which is perfect in the summer for all of our guests. These are the two works. The one on the left is Etica Patch's work, Women of the, Women from the Mountain. And it's a week-paced piece. The other is being made as we speak and should be installed shortly. And finally, because you can't talk to me without hearing some arts research, here's your arts research for Monday, Arts and Civic Dialogue. I'm not going to read all this. I will send it to you with references to where these different research projects were conducted and some examples of these. But this is from a survey from Art, Americans for the Arts. And I'm just going to call out these highlight points because I think that they're just incredible. That the arts provide a 20% increase in community satisfaction and maybe more, certainly for me personally. They drive trust, community satisfaction, levels of civic engagement, an 86% increase in civic involvement. A 40, participation in arts activities and people that are involved in the arts are 40% more likely to have diverse friends. And these are absolutely from proven research. This is empirical research from Americans for the Arts. The arts unifies generations, helps bridge language barriers and makes community members two times as likely to vote. This is one of many, many research kind of themes that I'll be lovingly bringing you. But it's just something to keep in mind as we talk about the arts in the future, that we have an impact much more broadly than is sometimes considered. And thank you all so much for your time this evening. It's really nice to see you and it was great to see some of you in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lauren at this time by any board members? Mayor Pro Tem Browning.
Just a couple of quick comments. As the mayor said, because the LAHC did not have a liaison, we agreed to basically, in pro wrestling, they call it a tag team on, on the meeting. So neither one of us had to go to every meeting. And second comment, the, the potential use of the depot by the LAHC is, is interesting. It's, there's a, it's not the first potential use of the depot that's come up recently. The, the board has never had a discussion about the status of the depot and what it might be used for and what the State Historic Commission restrictions are on it to look at the zoning requirements that apply to it, its own municipal. So I think before any organization gets too far down the road, it would be an appropriate subject for more discussion of what's, what uses being made of the depot now, what uses can be made up out of it in the future. Can it be used for commercial purposes, for example? So I think that's a topic that, that the board needs to discuss before any specific plans get too far down the road.
Any other comments on, on the board? Questions? Thank you, Lauren. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next item on the agenda into the record?
Yes, the next item is the utilities update.
Utility Director Kaplan.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. So to follow up first on some of trustee Caravus's information for the census data storage. They do offer, it's really a data analytics type program. So there is a little bit more than just the storage. You could, of course, do a number of fancy things and monitoring and graphs with that. So it could be something to look at in the future. UEB and staff had thought we probably did not need that at this time. The real portion we were looking at was just the data storage that is required of MEAN for us to provide on the solar meters. And that portion, we do feel we could take care of ourselves. Census gives us a file. We only right now have 50 meters, even if that grew to 100 meters. You're getting one file of that data. You can script things and we could get it to where it's in the format for MEAN. For the library, there was some concern about MEAN having the 25 kilowatt limit. In Nebraska, that is a limit for what individual customers could do on generating their own. After further discussion with MEAN, that is not the case. MEAN has said for an individual customer that there is not this restriction on the 25 kilowatts. It is in the town code that it can be reviewed. So staff has been reviewing that and I also wanted to get the utility and engineering board's thoughts on that. So they reviewed it last week, we now, or last meeting, and we now have new information and they'll be reviewing that again at the next one. But I, I, it sounds like it should be okay unless something else comes up. That's unknown at this time. Then I did have on my report, I did want to go through some of it just to make sure, you know, there are a few things that are important to make note of. One, with the capital improvements project for Long's Peak. What we are doing is we put out an addendum to allow contractors the option that if they feel it would be helpful or beneficial that they could start in January. Again, as I noted, the project would have to be completed in 90 days from when they started. But it gives them a longer lead time to feel comfortable getting materials with the hopes that that would reduce bids and allow for more bids to come in, which are due on the 23rd. So we'll see where things are at the next utility update. And I really wanted to emphasize for everybody with the Highway Seven project is going to begin in mid-September. And so the highway will be closed completely from mile marker 29 to mile marker 23. So there is a virtual public meeting. We don't yet have the details, but there is a meeting on August 3rd. Sure, Kim or I will get that information and try to get that posted for everybody. But wanted to put that out there because that will definitely lead to some confusion. I've asked for some paper information that we could have at Town Hall so that we could pass that out or wherever else we thought it might be beneficial for those coming through that need to find out how to get around that detour. Also then, on the wastewater treatment facility, we talked about, we have the new permit. And the next step would be this rerating project, which is the project you've heard about where we add new blowers, which add oxygen to the system and that allows for more of this high-strength waste called BOD or biochemical oxygen demand. So that permit, basically the site application, which is the first step expires the end of July unless we apply for this extension. So I have asked for the extension. I was hoping the check would be in your AP, but it will be in the next one. But we are applying for that extension because it sounds like at this point, we do want to move forward with the rerating project and not really wait, continue to wait and see what happens with Honeywell or with other funding. Again, this project could be tied into a bigger project, but with any project, if you go- Again, this project could be tied into a bigger project, but with any project, if you go on a much bigger scale, some of what we do now may need to be changed. You know, we could try to have somebody look at that and see, but I think if we move forward with the rerating and then we do another project, there may be some overlap. Then I also wanted to touch base on the water side of it, just to go through, because I know there's been some talk on, you know, again with the taps, with, sorry, with the, um, yeah, we're calling them the taps, with the flood recovery properties that we have the, the buyout taps on. So I had previously mentioned putting in the two-inch meter at Bone Park, and as we saw with the fire causing the river to be basically contaminated and not allow us to use the pumps there for non-potable water irrigating Bone Park. Turns out we will need to use our potable water for at least a period of time. And therefore, we would be using a two-inch service connection, and with Longmont, that would be six additional taps. So we could use six of the eight flood recovery taps for that two-inch meter. And that's what the thought was at the last meeting when I had mentioned that. Um, and then we also have this GOCO grant for a restroom facility over by Black Bear Hole or over by the wastewater treatment facility. That would be putting in a one-inch water tap. And that could use the remaining two flood recovery taps. Um, so then we would have all of those flood recovery taps would be gone. And sorry, I see, I actually did not even get this into my packet. I somehow cut it out. Um, so I apologize. I have a whole write-up on that in more detail after the irrigation paragraph. So we would basically be using up all of the flood development property tap, and we would be back to our standard 20, 21 shares of Colorado Big Thompson that we could use for any project. We still have those shares that do not need to be dedicated to Longmont each year. And so we can offer those up in the cases where the trustees decided that's what they wanted to do. Then on the electric side, I wanted to try to answer some of the questions that were asked when we discussed the solar project. So I did put in the information on the budget and the way I see the budget of the electric fund. I did add some information that included some details on one of the options that was looked at for the types of solar. And then we did add back in a two-and-a-half percent interest rate into the calculations if we were to get a bond. We did not have the information on what some of the upfront costs on that would be. And I think that's, well, I guess the other would be, you know, there's been some discussion there on the, with staff and with the Board of Trustees. My own opinion, my own thoughts on that as part of a staff update would be trying to make sure that I get a board directive going forward. I do feel sometimes I hear individual members saying what they believe and what their direction would be, and I'm not always sure if that's the board's direction. And it was my interpretation that the board would be discussing things amongst themselves, and then they give the board's final majority vote, or however that's done, to staff, and staff would carry out what the board directs. Not each individual member offering up to me what their directive would be. And if that's incorrect, then I could learn something different on that. And that's my report.
I have several questions. Uh, first of all, uh, to be perfectly frank, uh, would any individual board member, uh, would relate to you? Is it relevant? Uh, what the Board of Trustees as a whole votes is, uh, the policy decision. Just as, uh, as, uh, our form of government, that's the way it's handled, you know? I could ask you a question like I did the other day, just because I ask you a question. That has not meant to be a directive in the slightest. Four members of this Board of Trustees are what dictate a policy decision, and it's the only time that it can be made is in a public forum like this. So that's number one. But let me ask you a couple of questions. Are you concerned at all in regard to the Long's Peak project that not only getting a PVC pipe this summer, but are you prepared for a price increase on the PVC pipe?
That is a concern, and that was one of the reasons to allow the extension that a contractor might feel they could see that price go down if they were able to hold off on that project until next spring.
Okay. And the other more, much more important, uh, a question that I have for you is I understand, uh, because of the fires, that we can't run the pumps. We have very expensive pumps. And basically, it will ruin a pump to get, uh, that ash in the pump. But when you talk about using, um, all but two of the available, uh, confluence taps, uh, to be able to irrigate the park, um, once the river is clear and we can use those pumps, do you think it's possible to go back to, uh, Longmont and get those, uh, um, uh, taps, um, reimbursed to the town?
We have been discussing that with them, and in general, no, the, the agreement with Longmont is that if you put in the tap, then you are using that. There has been some discussion on adjustments. Could it be switched to someplace else that was already being used? That was talked about with the three taps that have been kept, I guess you would say. So out of all of those buyout properties, the town did not return three of them. We kept three that were considered active and are currently considered active, even though they're not being used at the, what was the Christmas house there and Art Fair as an example. So they have said we could switch that, and if it was used in a different location, as long as there wasn't one at the old location, that would be okay. Just moving it from one location to another location. How we would handle exactly the, the changing, the meter would be there, the connection would still be there for whenever we needed to use that water. And there might be other times in the future when we would need to use that water. So Longmont's thought is that it would require both the service connect, the water rights and the service connection fee. Now, those flood buyout taps don't, you don't have to pay fees because they were just put back and we've already paid the fees on them. If you are to use new CBT shares, then those would have to have a service connection paid also. There is also the consideration of is park development economic development? I have heard other planners say that in other locations, that can be considered part of economic development. In which case you're looking at the option to use Lake McIntosh watershed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any, uh, other questions for Utility Director Kaplan? Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, the extension on the, um, wastewater treatment plant improvements, what period of time was that extension requested for? How long?
It's just a, um, one form, the extension. I'd have to go back and see how long. I believe it's two years again, which is what the original one was.
And so we submitted an extension request for two years and we're waiting for CD-PAG to respond. Is that correct?
I was waiting. They want payment usually upfront, but we don't have, they didn't get the payment form that they needed until today to us. So I'm going to be submitting to them to ask if I can still submit this without the payment. Yeah, yeah. So it's in process, but I've not submitted the application yet.
Okay. Well, yeah. For $753, I think it's, you know, money well spent to, so we can do some more cost analysis if nothing else. Um, and then I guess I need to go back and review the water cap allocations for the Bone Park irrigation. I thought I recall from years past, from the, the prior board, that we had already used some of those taps for a two-inch connection to irrigate Bone Park. So is that, is that already, that's being accounted for in your analysis?
Yes, there is another two-inch at Bone Park. We upsized a couple of years ago, I believe it was 2019 or 2018, and it's in the Longmont letter. If you look at the annual letter, there are some details on it. Um, I could pull that up too, with that we upsized from three-quarter inch tap to a two-inch tap, and we used five of the buyout taps for that. We also used buyout taps for the Public Works Building.
Okay, and so that took five, and now then, then we upsize to a six-inch tap, and that's what's requiring the other six, I'm, I'm, I'm following the math.
Second, it's a second line. Um, but we have two, yeah, two, two-inch meters.
Okay. All right, that explains it. Thank you.
Further questions for Aaron? Thank you for your reports, sir. Always comprehensive. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, please read the next, uh, agenda item into the record.
I can do that. The next, I'm sorry, the next agenda item is the finance update.
Madam Administrator?
Thank you. Um, we still are not in a position to have a very thorough financial update, though I can tell you that, um, the 2020 audit is still in full process. We are down to the final, probably week of preparation to get our final 2020 numbers so that we can start presenting some more accurate 2021 numbers. Um, what I can tell you, however, um, is that it appears on a, um, on a month-by-month basis, um, things are, let's see here, things are doing well in regard to the sales tax arena. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I want to show everyone the sales tax collection over the last few years compared to this year. And, um, what I can show you is that 2021 is remaining to be very strong with the first five months of sales increases being between 10 and 20% each month. And for the first five months of this year, sales tax, um, is up about $107,000 more than we had budgeted for. And our largest sales tax collection months are usually June through September, so we may see even, um, more significant strides over these next few months. Um, also, um, the, like I said, as the audit comes forward, um, we will be able to get you more detailed finance reports that you're used to. But at this point, it does not appear that any of the funds are in any kind of trouble. Um, and sales tax revenue is certainly, uh, well above almost a whole month worth more of, of sales tax than we're used to. So um, that is looking good. I know you're used to this chart as well. Um, while we're talking kind of on the sales tax and business, um, one of the grants I did not mention during our workshop is a new grant so that if you're a Main Street community, um, there's going to be a grant called Open for Business. This will be a $50,000 grant to every business in town, up to a million dollars to do facade improvements or energy-saving improvements to their businesses. So, um, that is another area where I think we can really help our businesses this year get a boost. Um, and, uh, we're planning at this point to sign up, uh, for that grant, and, uh, then we'll have a program for our businesses as well. And then it's my understanding, um, that, um, I'd like to at the next meeting, um, talk with the board about, um, food trucks and, um, business licensing and our strides we're making in that area. So that's all I have for finance right now. Uh, the auditors do want to meet with the Board of Trustees at your next workshop, August 2nd, to go through the, uh, financial statements for the end of 2020, so those can be approved and turned in. And, um, then, uh, the, the interim finance director can start preparing some reports.
I know that it's been, uh, of interest, uh, to our trustees in the past, and I see his hand raised. To at least ask how much of that increase in sales tax is online sales and how much is, uh, is, uh, in-town, uh, local businesses, administrator Simonson? I think that, that the answer will surprise everybody.
Well, I was able to get the information to really look at the sales tax report myself instead of through another person this past month. I was shocked to look at, um, probably 98% of sales right now are online.
I, that's why I brought it up. I, I considered that shocking as well. Trustee Juan?
Thank you for getting that number. That's exactly what I was going to ask for. Um, I think I've asked for it every single time a financial report has been given. So I appreciate it being proactively calculated, and I think it is very significant, that number. And I am not surprised by that number, to be honest. Um, you know, and I'm a little confused by the workshop documentation that the first document was what we would do if we had revenue shortages. Um, and it doesn't look like that is going to apply to us at all. So I think it's very important for the town board, this board, to realize that that number, and I, I would like to see it, and I would like to see it publicly going forward on the report, not just discussed, but so that there's a permanent record of it so that we can see it. It means we are failing our businesses, in my opinion, so.
That could be done. That can be done. Uh, Administrator?
Um, two things. The revenue loss.
Wait a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. I, I just want to, there's another side to the issue of frustration. And that's that a trustee should not be interrupted. And I say that, I say that with, uh, kindness in my voice. So that's a consideration that should be given to trustees as well. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have a statement that you wanted to make?
About?
Sales tax?
No.
I thought you had, I thought you had raised your hand, sir. I'm sorry. Administrator Simonson?
I think you saw me raising my hand. Um, and to, to put in better perspective, as I said, I finally got the documents in a format that I could read. Um, there are literally about 60 pages of individual sales tax businesses, and, um, it was very interesting to get it in that type of detail and, and probably will take a little, you know, it'll take some work, but I just want to clarify. What you're saying is you want to know the difference. You want to make sure that online sales and local sales are identified on a written report each month.
Part of the financial report every time that it's presented, please.
Okay, well, it will only be, okay.
Close figures. Obviously, we can identify individuals. We all know that. Okay, that's easily done.
Um, thank you.
You're welcome. Would you rather, uh, would you like to continue with your administrator's report if you're?
Sure. Sure. Um, as always, we have been touching on COVID first during all of this pandemic. The latest and probably most important news to us is that the governor has canceled the state of Colorado's pandemic emergency orders. However, Boulder County has not, and so with their declaration remaining in place, it gives Boulder County Public Health um, the authority to enact emergency health orders in our county. So that's just a kind of a shift after this year and a half that we have not had previously. Um, I think we all know that, um, there's a slight uptick in some cases and, and hospitalizations mostly due to what they're, you know, calling this Delta variant. Um, I think we all know that um, there's a slight uptick in some cases and, and hospitalizations mostly due to what they're, you know, calling this Delta variant. Um, but um, at this point, nothing that's alarming to our, our system uh, to date. For those who haven't seen this lately, um, we've had five deaths in Boulder County due to COVID since May 1st for a total of 261 Boulder County residents who have passed from COVID. Um, I don't know that I mean, uh, I'm gonna get through some of this. Um, Venus de Miles, uh, some of you are probably familiar with that. It's Colorado, Colorado's largest all-women's bike ride. They um, approached the town of Lyons. They would like us to start being their host city instead of um, prospect. So they have submitted an application to use Bone Park on Saturday, August 28th for approximately 1,200 riders. Um, so we are working with them on um, that application. The other thing that's really had a significant impact on our community over the last couple of weeks is this US 36 fiber installation that is going from Lyons to Estes Park. Um, this is really having an impact on traffic flow. Today, C-DAT asked us if we would change our VMS sign to encourage people to take Highway 7. Some folks are sitting for 45 minutes at a time, just which is not acceptable during the high season going up to Estes. So, um, we're working with closely with C-DAT. Um, they've actually said this is more out of their realm than they've ever had either. When it's, because it's a communications and they don't have as much control or leverage over where they're placing it and their timing. So, we're trying to work really cooperatively with C-DAT to help them through this. As you can see, as they've gone through our town, i- it's pretty disruptive. Um, they're leaving quite a mess behind them, even though, you know, they'll come back and fix it up. But um, this is happening um, all the way up the mountain. So, um, I'm getting lots of calls from out of, out of the town limits, people saying, how can you help us? And just trying to direct them to the right people. Um, also want to let the general public know that beginning uh, June 20, the 21st, Wednesday, Laverne Johnson uh, Park is being leased to Planet Bluegrass. Residents are allowed to walk through the park. Um, it may be asked for a valid um, proof of address to do so. But we just want to let everyone know that time is coming. And then is there anything else on my report you want to cover in this setting?
Um, yeah, um, I don't see, and I could be mistaken. Uh, an, an agenda item for a full discussion on the uh, uh, water treatment plant on uh, on uh, Apple Valley. Am I mistaken on that?
No, we were supposed to have put that back on.
Okay, I didn't, I must have an old uh, thing, but I know that you have some uh, perhaps some great news in regard to that. So, uh, where is that placed on the agenda now?
It's item number, it's item number 200, General Business. Because they just removed Benita Yoder, so that would move up to item number two. Oh, I'm sorry, it's number three.
Number three is uh, what I have on my agenda is number three is a discussion of a, a permit RV parking at the wastewater treatment plant.
Right, I just redid my numbering, sir, because they pulled the Yoder request.
So all I'm asking is where is the discussion?
It's after the wastewater treatment.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The last item under General.
Okay, good, because I know, I know we have some pretty good news possibly in regard to that. Uh, are you, uh, is your report complete?
There's questions or comments?
Questions or comments for Administrator Simonson? Mayor Proten?
Part of this report is regarding the curbside limb pickup. Um, I guess I would defer to the will of the majority of the board, whether we discuss that tonight or whether we put that on a future uh, agenda as a separate item to be discussed. I had originally requested it as uh, a separate agenda item because I wanted to highlight that it hadn't been done yet. Um, I later said, when requested by staff, it's fine to put it in the trustee report. But what the information that appears in the trustee report uh, is contradicted by information that was, that came out during um, the workshop tonight. So, if we don't discuss it tonight, I will go back to asking for a full, separate agenda item on it at our next meeting. Um, and let me go ahead and respond since I didn't have a chance to earlier. Um, the mayor alluded to this and after my chastisement again by trustee Rogan, it is extremely impolite for a staff member to interrupt a board member when the board member has the floor at a meeting. It's doubly impolite for that to happen twice, which happened tonight. That's not the first time this has happened. It's happened with other trustees and the issue has been raised before. So yes, my tone of voice was frustrated, got frustrated because I don't want being interrupted once or twice when I have the floor. Uh, that's implied. And it's interesting that uh, trustee Rogan would chastise me for my tone of voice, but ignore the repeated interruptions by the town, by a staff member. That's a double standard which I don't appreciate. And secondly, my frustration here is not just with regard to this issue for this year. My frustration is that this particular program, which is well-liked by many people in town, uh, has had to be shepherded year after year after year by board members. The way things are supposed to work is the board makes a decision, the board appropriates funds, and the staff does what the board decides for three years in a row. The board has appropriated funds for curbside limb pickup. For three years in a row, it hasn't gotten done until after repeated reminders, inquiries from board members. Trustee Miller and I teamed up the first last two years to try to get this done. So everybody will know, I emailed about this before I raised it at a meeting. It still hasn't gotten done. And for each year, the staff always tries to mix this together. The curbside limb pickup and the SFC's separate, which used to be a cleanup day, and now it may be a slash pile day or whatever. They're separately budgeted. The, the item in the uh, administrator's report that there's $11,000 budgeted for both programs, once again, mixes those two programs. That's not what's in the budget. The budget has a $5,000 item for curbside limb pickup and a $6,000 item for the SFC program, which is offset in part by some revenues that people pay to recycle their various things and deposit their stuff. They're two separate programs. The staff has confused them either not knowing or deliberately for three years in a row. This is something the Public Works Department should handle. It is a classic Public Works function and something the Public Works Department handled for many years. But each of the last two years, the Public Works Department doesn't seem to even be involved. Another staffer takes care of it. Why can't Public Works Department organize a curbside limb pickup that is essentially repeating the same contract that, and, and publicity arrangements that have been done each of the last two years? It's just repeating the same program. They don't even have to use their own personnel on it. This is simply an example, as trustee Wa said, of something that the board decided, the board budgeted for. Again, I will repeat, over initially, the objections of town staff and town staff just doesn't get done for three years in a row. And does that frustrate me? Yes, it does. And uh, you know, i- if, if we want to take it up tonight and get board direction, it's not on the agenda for that. We can put it off till next week, but it looks like on this item that it's gonna take board action to get it done because we heard during the workshop tonight that staff has come up with a reason to delay it. Um, I'm not in favor of that. I'd like the board to give direction at some point, either tonight or at the next meeting about proceeding with this program, because apparently board direction is needed. And that's, that's, it's about that aspect of the report.
Okay, I think the proper uh, uh, way to do that is to bring that up under future agenda items because we've already approved uh, this particular agenda.
That's what I'll do then. Thank you.
The, um, and I did mention, along with uh, being kinder, um, the concept of uh, of not interrupting because that can be very frustrating as well. I want to tap it down a little. That's all. Um, legal update, Counselor?
Thank you, Mary Angelo. So I just sent to the board, um, something that was requested from us, uh, after the broadband uh, presentation we did in June. Um, it was as a customer satisfaction surveys and I did receive as well as on vacation and as many of you know, I've been sick the past couple of weeks, but we did have five examples of different customer satisfaction surveys I want to send out to the board. So those are in your inbox right now. Um, that I was able to send during the administrator's report. Um, other than that, um, I think the only thing we have is on the executive session tonight on Callahan. You've previously received an email on that, but we will discuss that during executive session.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I just want to make sure that I have this uh, processed down correctly. Uh, in regard to the second readings on ordinances, a staff report, questions, public comment, uh, and then comments by the board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Could you please read the next item into the record, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item one is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance 1102, an ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado, amending sections of the Lyons Municipal Code addressing condominiumization regulations.
Staff?
I guess I'll give uh, this presentation. So, um, this is an edit to the town code to make uh, condominiumization of the existing structure, uh, minor subdivision process. And as we have discussed in the past, right now, uh, condominiumization is purely a state process by which um, someone applies to become a condo, which is really about the ownership portion of, of that transaction. What the state process doesn't cover is any sort of informing the local municipality as to that process has occurred. And the reason why that's important is because a lot of times, and as we've seen in the past in Lyons, these condominiumizations can cause all sorts of land use issues in particular. And if we don't even know that they happen and we can't identify those land use issues and then use the, the toolbox tools we have in our toolbox to remedy those until perhaps it's too, too late in some cases. And so the idea is um, not to stop condominiumization, you know, we can't do that. It's a state process. But to make it so that we are informed, um, when that process happens, uh, through a minor subdivision process. And then to create, um, you know, uh, protections from things like, uh, uh, you know, becoming, transferring ADU into a condominiumization and the utility impacts might be, that, that was the idea behind this. Um, a question that was raised at the last meeting, I didn't have the code citation on hand, goes ask whether it's currently, even without this ordinance, legal for um, an ADU to be converted into um, a condo. And the answer I gave then was that it is against the code currently, and that is correct. Um, if you look at section 161070 of the Municipal Code, which deals with um, ADUs, there's two sections that really this kind of goes to. The first is section E, you have ownership, which says that when you create an ADU, um, the ownership of the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated. And so when you condominiumize, you are separating that ownership. So that is one violation of the ADU code. Um, second, really the thrust of, you know, this discussion in a lot of ways is uh, section, subsection F, which is concerning utilities. And the thrust of that section says that, um, if at any point accessory dwelling is converted into a non-accessory dwelling unit, um, with or without separate ownership, you have to install separate water, wastewater, electric services. And so the, the, the existing, the municipal code does deal with this issue to some degree already. Um, however, the problem is, is that the condominiumization can occur and we don't even know. And so we can't go back and force these provisions of the code. So the idea is that by the creation of a minor subdivision process by which um, someone had to submit um, information concerning um, their intent to condominiumize or that we would then be aware of these issues and be able to counteract them as necessary so that, you know, the condominiumization process is not impede upon our land use code and our utilities code. And so that's really the intent behind, um, you know, what we have done. Um, in between first reading and second reading, I did um, based on feedback from the board, um, add a section concerning utility dedications. I understand there may be additional amendments to further refine that, considering we kind of drafted it on the fly. Um, but that has been added since the first reading on this ordinance, uh, pursuant to the board's direction. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only question I have, Counselor, since we have uh, three more second readings is uh, in this process uh, that I just discussed, when did we make the motion?
So we, you make the motion um, after the public hearing. It's a motion, second, uh, discussion. You know, any comments, vote?
All right, good. I just wanted to get that straight because uh, I want this whole process through these four-second readings to go smoothly. Um, are there any questions for Counselor? Um, so, I'll open the public hearing on uh, ordinance 1102. Would anybody in the public wish to uh, comment on ordinance 1102 at this time? Madam Clerk?
Um, I don't see anyone's hand raised, but I do have a statement from Ms. Boyle that was sent to the board. And she'd like me to read it in for the record. The.
That's a different.
Oh, is that a different ordinance? I'm sorry.
That's on, yeah, that, that is, that is. I believe it is. Um.
Yes, sorry. That's for the next one.
That's okay. So, uh, um, so you see, no, you don't recognize anybody, Madam Clerk?
No one's got their hand raised.
I always like to ask. We'll close the uh, public hearing, uh, um, portion of uh, this ordinance discussion and uh, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Mayor Proten?
I move the adoption of ordinance uh, 1102, uh, remanding certain sections of the municipal code to include subdivision processes for condominiums.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any uh, um, comments by the board or amendments? Uh, Mayor Proten?
I have an amendment and it's to section 1715-40, which is on page three in the packet and the board, I'll read into the record, the board may want to take a look at that as, as I'm proposing different language. It's in section 15, excuse me, 17-15-40, utility fees and dedication. And my amendment would be, uh, would begin on the third line. After the words, provide additional, so I, I would replace the rest of that section with these words. Provide additional water share dedications, tax fees, and utility connection fees required by this code for residential units, comma, unless waived by the Board of Trustees for good cause shown. And so, that's my motion. If it's seconded, I'll, I'll explain what I'm intending by the wording change.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Continue, Mayor Proten.
This is what the attorney general was alluding to earlier. We were kind of drafting this on the fly during the last meeting. And the way that the, the draft emerged in the last meeting would have required water shares and tax fees and so forth to be done, as it was phrased, to cover the increase in utility usage. So you could have a situation, I think, where you would have a small condo proposed to be added and the combined usage of the existing dwelling unit on that property and a small condo might not exceed the volume of water that um, would be produced by the water share and three-quarter inch tap, if that's, if the standard tap is there. So my change would actually require water share and tax fee dedications and utility connection fees, which is electric fees for any additional dwelling unit, no matter what the water usage. The Board of Trustees could waive that. And the idea is if you're gonna condominiumize a second dwelling, you know, the piece of property, you're gonna have to put up all the uh, water shares, tax fees and, and electric connection fees. And that's what the ADU part of the code that Brandon just read says. Now, if somebody, if somebody comes in and is proposing a condominium project and the and a, a board thinks that it's a great project and maybe it's a mixed-use project combined with a desirable, um, you know, retail or other business on the ground floor or something, then the board would have the authority to waive some of those fees and say, no, you don't, you know, you're to waive some of those fees and say, no, you don't, you know, your total water volume isn't sufficient that you need to put up an additional water share and pay a tap fee and an electric connection fee for each unit. But this would basically trigger the process. And I think by doing that, what it would do, and we talked about this a little bit last time, is would provide an incentive for people to go the ADU route. Because if you go through the ADU process, under the board policy, as reflected in the code, you don't have to pay the additional, you don't have to put up another water share. You don't have to pay an additional water or sewer tap fee or electrical connection fee. And that was done specifically to encourage ADUs. So if somebody's looking at adding another dwelling in it on an existing piece of property, they could go the ADU route, not have to pay, not have to put up a water share, pay tap fees and electric connection fees. Or if they try to go the condominium route, unless the board weighs it under this language, they would have to put up all those things. So it incentivizes ADUs over condos. But it still would let the board, if somebody has a condo as a part of a desirable project, waive those fees if it wants to. And the board can waive the fees anyway, anytime it wants to. So this is really trying to trigger not just increased utility usage, but also basically you put a second dwelling, you know, and you try to condo it, you're gonna, you're gonna need to pay the tap fees and put up a water share unless the board excuses you from doing that. And I think that makes it more consistent with what we've got in the ADU process. So that's the reason for the proposed amendment.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? I see none. Well, since we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance eleven oh two, we'll vote on that at this time. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Mayor Angelo?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning?
Aye.
Trusty Rogan?
Aye.
Caravis? Trusty Lowell?
Aye.
And Trusty Wa.
For the amendment to ordinance eleven oh two passes unanimously. Now we'll vote on the ordinance eleven oh two as amended. Is there any further discussion? I see none. I'll call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo? Mayor Proton Browning?
Aye.
Trusty Rogan?
Aye.
Trusty Caravis?
Aye.
Trusty Lowell?
Aye.
And Trusty Wa.
Aye.
Ordinance eleven oh two passes unanimously as amended. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next agenda item into the record?
Yes, item two is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance eleven oh three, an ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado, amending section thirteen dash three dash ninety of the Lyons Municipal Code, amending net metering policies.
Again, Mayor and Trustees. This ordinance, again, was the ordinance that came about after our two thousand and sixteen electric system cost of services study had recommended reconsidering our distributed generation policies because a number of locations have found there are concerns with that and some of the subsidies that come from that. And so the UEB had been reviewing this for a number of years to understand the impacts. And they put together what you see in ordinance eleven oh one. There was some questioning on the change in rate, so I did look at that. And if it was helpful, I thought I could go over. We're talking about reducing the amount of, we're talking about reducing the rate for the electricity that gets returned back to the town from somebody with solar. So currently, the town's rate is twelve point seven five cents per kilowatt. Or you could look at it as twelve dollars and seventy five cents for a hundred kilowatts. This ordinance says we would go with the current rate that we can buy wind or renewable energy with from me, which is four point three cents. We're at a hundred kilowatts, you're talking about four dollars and thirty cents. So that's reduced by eight dollars. So for every hundred kilowatts somebody gave back to the town, they would be basically seeing a reduction. Their bill could go up by eight dollars because they're seeing eight dollars less coming back. At five hundred kilowatts, that's forty dollars. I don't have a good estimate of what we see from our various solar because in the past, we just looked at what was the net. Somebody could use one hundred and give back eighty, and that would be twenty as a net. Or somebody could use five hundred and give back four hundred and eighty, and we would still only see the same twenty. So it's only since the new meters went in and I started looking at those as we do some different studies, try to find out what the average might be. So I don't have that specific number. That's the report for that ordinance.
I have, I have several questions. Are you done, Aaron? Okay, I have several questions. Originally, and counsel may have to help me on this. This is not an easy item to understand, for me anyway. Originally, it was the law that if solar energy produced an excess of electricity, that a municipality had to take it into its grid. Is that right, Counselor?
That's only the case for utilities serving more than five thousand customers. And so we fall under that limit.
Okay, so, so we were never obligated by law that we must take it into the system and, and pay somebody for it. Is that, is that right?
For utilities, municipal utilities of our size, that's correct. For every other type of utility, they would be required by law to take that at the retail rate. We kind of fall in a special category.
Okay, so what we did, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, is we, when we encouraged solar installations, agreed to pay the twelve point seven five. Is that correct, Aaron?
The retail rate. We agreed to pay whatever the retail.
We agreed as a municipality to pay the retail rate. Then we, we had a couple of workshops that I can remember and, and it was stated that basically these installations of solar were being subsidized by the other electric users in town, correct?
Correct.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand it as completely as possible.
There may be one other than important point for that cost analysis. You mentioned we would agree to pay the twelve point seven five. We really agreed to just look at their net amount. So if we gave them a hundred and they gave us back a hundred, it was zero. If they gave back us extra ten, we would bank that. And then after one year, we would add up what they have in the bank. And that they would be reimbursed at the wholesale rate. So there were two rates really in there. Again, when you're using the electricity and it's just going back and forth, it's at the retail rate. There's no change. It's just one to one. But if you gave the town an extra portion of electricity, let's just use the ten kilowatts, you would get, I think we were, I'd have to look at what we have, but it depended on the wholesale cost, the full cost to mean of a kilowatt. And that's what you would get back. So more like three point eight cents on that extra. If that helps. So anything over and above, if you went to zero, if you gave back as much as you used, you would be at zero.
Right.
And so that's really a one to one. For that whole amount, you were really seeing twelve point seven five because it compensated for the one you paid for. But now it would be if you use ten and gave back ten, you would be paying twelve cents for that ten you gave, and you would only be getting back four point three cents for the ten you gave back.
Okay, so, so in just my language, are the deals changed? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the deal has changed. All right, we can agree on that. My dear friend, Trusty Caravis, always uses the example of a tax law can change from year to year, you know, so I understand that deals can change. To me, it would seem as if the original policy would be to incentivize solar and that this policy now would, for all intents and purposes, to me anyway, disincentivize solar to a certain extent. Am I incorrect in regard to that assumption?
It would take longer to make a return on your investment.
So that's what I call it. That's what I call de-incentivizing. Okay, so we're doing that at the same time, and this will be a further discussion later in the evening. We're doing that at the same time that we're talking about putting in a solar farm. So these are just the issues that I want to try to understand myself. The other thing is year end, that the, that the excess energy at year end is accounted for and can't be carried over into the future. Is that correct?
Right, we set up so that we do the payment for the current customers at the end of the year.
Okay, and just like we do similar to what we do in regard to our sewer rates, we judge them in the, in the three, of the first three months of the year. Because, you know, people aren't watering their lawns and basically it's a really, it's not perfect, but it's about as perfect as it can get to a, to a true sewer rate. So it seems a little strange that at, at the, in January, February and March, when people may need that carryover that they generated from the year before, that, that they don't, that they don't have that capability to have capitalized on that. And if they don't generate enough electricity in those months because of the weather, snow, whatever, that they're somewhat penalized. Am I off based on that?
I haven't looked at that. I was trying to think if the, what they don't use in January, February, they would make back in the summer. That may not be the case. I would have to look at.
Okay.
Attorney Dittman has his hand up.
Okay, Attorney Dittman?
Yeah, Mayor Angelo, I probably have a little more background on why that is in the code. So the, the code that has exists today and the policy the town currently runs is the same one that's applicable to every other utility in the state of Colorado that's above that threshold, which requires this cash out kind of process at the end of each year. And the idea being a kind of mission, you produce less in the winter and you produce more in the summer, but over that year span it'll normalize, right? And so it, you actually are not penalized for that time because at the end of the year, you're going to produce more in the summer and get it back, if you will. You start out the year in a deficit and then get it back in the summer. But the, at the code as it exists today is solely based on really well set up for the investor on utilities and is in trying and law for them to this day. In which I'd say the majority of utilities in Colorado follow that model. And that's only recently that, you know, investor on utilities have tried to change that model and have been told they cannot. For policy reasons, the state has decided. And that municipal utilities, you know, such as Loveland and others that are beginning to explore changing. And I think something, the real electric cooperatives have also changed to a certain degree where we have more flexibility to make these types of, you know, policy changes. And the idea being, to kind of sum it up neatly, is that we can buy, the argument, the policy argument being that we could buy renewable energy cheaper at the utility scale than we can buy from someone who has it on their rooftop, which is what we call distributed, you know, energy. So that's kind of the, the end of the day art, policy argument for why you might consider this.
No, no, I understand that completely. It's just that, you know, I, I have a difficult time with people who invested in solar under the previous policy. And, and changing it to this was almost an extreme. You're talking about a factor of three, you know, so I have a little bit of a difficult time with that, but I don't want to, I don't want to monopolize this discussion. Is there anybody else who wishes to have any comments, questions? Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I, I have a question. And Ms. Boyle's statement is going to be read. And we had a, we had an email from another town resident who also had invested in solar. And it, my question has to do with the, the payback periods. And it relates to what kind of a grandfathering time we put into these ordinance. I talked to one UEB member this week who said that I believe that the UEB actually had a list of all the people that had put in solar under the existing policy and that they took a look at basically what the payout periods for, not necessarily the average, but typical sort of payback period for the people that in town who had put in solar. Are you familiar with that? Were you part of that process or was that just UEB?
There was discussion on what the payback periods were when solar first started to understand that it took, they thought, twenty years from the first solar, but that that reduced, that payback periods now are down to about ten years. And that was where they came up with the twenty thirty year for the grandfathering.
I guess the payback period for each household that installed it would vary depending on what deal they cut at what time with their particular installer. Is that right?
Yes.
So somebody, somebody could have a, you cut a real good deal, might even have an eight year payback period. And somebody who's got a bad deal might have a sixteen year payback period. You can't really generalize, I suppose. Is that right?
The UEB had looked at it and thought that, and again, it's a couple of the members who have looked into it in more detail. I don't know what the payback period. I've not looked into the return on investment on various solar, if it's pretty consistent or how much it does vary. One would expect individual construction.
Let me just ask another question.
One more quick question. How many people in town, or how many households, I should say, in town have installed solar under the existing policy?
Fifty? Sorry, sixty.
Sixty.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the payback period depend on how, I don't want to say powerful, but how much energy could be produced by the solar installation that, that somebody installed?
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
So I would say yes. And I'll just give a little more background on typically how these deals are structured. There's two different ways. You know, one, you own the system outright. Like my house, for example, I have solar on my roof. I own the system a hundred percent outright. And so whatever payback, you know, I get is based on is whatever I produce in the future. And almost every installer that puts these things in, there's a cap in our ordinance, you know, there's a cap on other people's ordinances and regulations for accelerant, usually about a hundred and ten, twenty percent of whatever your potential theoretical generation of your consumption. You, you never ever reach that a hundred and twenty percent. You may get close to a hundred in some, you know, lucky situations. But, you know, there are cap to theoretically only capture a hundred and twenty percent of your annual consumption. That's how these things are sized. And so either you own it outright and then, you know, you kind of know what you invested and, and then you're betting on the, the market essentially, what you produce to pay that back. Or in the way that these deals are also commonly structured is you don't own the system, the installer owns the system and you are basically leasing that maybe for zero down out front. Usually they often are, you pay zero dollars, they put the solar on your roof. And you basically lock in your electricity rate for a twenty year period, ten year period, different ways you can structure this. But usually on these types of deals are a longer payback period, like twenty years. And the installer keeps whatever savings you get. So they basically guarantee your, your So they basically guarantee your, your electricity rate for twenty years. And that whatever savings that may be realized from the system, they get to keep. And so those are really the two different ways that these deals are structured.
Any further questions? If not, I'll uh, open the public comment on uh, ordinance eleven oh three. And I know that uh, Madam Clerk has a couple of uh, items to be read into the record. And then if we identify anybody else in the public who wishes to speak, uh, please point them out. Madam Clerk?
Um, yes, this, this letter is from Ms. Julie Boyle, two-two-four Welch Drive, to the trustees. I write you again to summarize my comments, requests regarding net metering sent to you last April. I am a rooftop solar resident. I do not argue that rooftop solar may not deliver the most efficient and equitable electric rates. However, I feel it is very important to share information you may not be aware of and briefly reiterate my concerns. I believe that changes to the net metering structure at this time when both the B O T Director Kaplan and the U E B are considering future changes to the whole structure of electric supply and equitable billing based on data gathered from the brand new smart meters is premature. Director Kaplan's cover memo to the B O T for the seven-six-twenty-one meeting notes that in twenty fifteen, the P U C Public Utilities Commission undertook a comprehensive investigation of the benefits and costs of net metering and generally found the problems posed by net metering to be overstated by the I O Us. And that conversely, the benefits provided by net metering were undervalued by the I O Us. Also, Justin Spencer, a resident who is an energy analyst for Navigant Research, stated to the S F C that it is quite possible that air conditioning users receive the biggest subsidies of any electric consumer. I would request that the B O T delay any changes to the net metering policy until the town's entire electric supply and rates be informed by the data gathered from the smart meters and comprehensive decisions be based on that data. At the seven-six-twenty-one B O T meeting, the board amended the proposed ordinance to sunset in twenty twenty-six rather than in twenty thirty. The predicted life of our current panels installed twenty sixteen is twenty-five years, meaning that they will likely continue to generate power through the year twenty forty-one. According to the Colorado Solar and Storage Association, this predicted lifespan is proving accurate for the most part. The town of Lyons has always been very committed to its business investors, what of its commitments to individual investors? These rooftop installations support the town's goal of utilizing as much renewable energy as possible and more enthusiastically embraced by both the B O Ts and the U E Bs at the time of installation. This extraordinary change to the town's commitment to the existing fifty-two solar generators will mean that the R O I made by grandfathered customers will be significantly longer. To abandon these commitments by previous boards represents to me a serious breach of good faith and calls into question the integrity and reliability of future commitments made by this and succeeding boards. I request that sunsetting of grandfathered systems occur after the projected twenty-five year life of each individual system.
Is there another uh, letter uh, that was forwarded to uh, on the board uh? Did you receive that, Madam Clerk?
No, I only received Ms. Boyle's and I received it from her and then from several different trustees as well that forwarded it to me. If there's another one, I'll gladly read it in.
Uh, I don't know how to access it right now, uh, but I think it was from uh, uh, a member of the S F C, was it not? Administrator Simonson? You don't, you never saw, you never saw that letter either? Mayor Proton Browning?
I, I think that that was an email from a resident who's on the Parks Commission, actually. Um, but I didn't, I, I don't think in that email that the resident requested that it be read into the record. I think it was just an email that he sent to all, at least I got it. I'm not sure that he requested it go into the record, so I.
The one that I got, um, was, was from a member of the S F C.
I didn't get that.
Not, but he did, he specifically said that he was not going to uh, um, a request that it be read into the record as a member of the S F C, but as a private citizen of the town of Lyons. We don't have that anywhere?
What's his name?
I have it handy and.
Trusty Rogan?
I can, I'm sorry, I have it handy and I can forward it to Town Clerk Vasquez.
Can you do that? Can you do that right now? Because I think it's important that it be read into the. Thank you. Are there any other comments or, uh, excuse me, any other questions that any other trustees have? At this time? Then we'll just be patient and, and wait for this uh, to be read into the record.
Okay, I sent it.
Okay, thank you.
I do recall this because Dave, this is from Dave Hatchamanji. And he called me and he said I did not have to read it in because it's three pages long. I can certainly read it in.
I didn't know it was three pages long.
Yes, three pages long, but, you know, we can certainly read it in. Um, to the Lyons Board of Trustees from Dave Hatchamanji, two-hundred Welch Court Drive in Lyons regarding ordinance eleven oh three. This is dated seven fourteen twenty twenty-one. Dear trustees, I am submitting the following written comments for inclusion during the second reading of ordinance eleven oh three scheduled for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. I am providing these viewpoints as a resident of the town of Lyons. Having viewed the July sixth first reading of the revised net meeting, metering ordinance and reviewing the board packet pertaining to this topic, I strongly urge the board to either vote against ordinance eleven oh three or barring that, delay a decision until further discussion with affected Lyons residents can be held. The fou, the following reasons for asking you to take this course of action are, number one, Director of Utilities and Engineering, Aaron Kaplan's June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one B O T Agenda Cover Sheet Memo to the B O T contained within the seven-six packet. In paragraph three fiscal impact, Director Kaplan provides no estimate on the dollar value of this change in net metering policies other than to surmise that this will increase town revenues. Is it by one hundred dollars a year, one thousand dollars a year, ten thousand dollars a year, one hundred thousand dollars a year? The amount and hence the impact is thus unknown. Also, without this underlying revenue estimate, there is no way to confirm or dispute the overall assumption. Number two, what is made clear from this B O T Agenda Cover Sheet, however, is what's written in paragraph five, legal issues. Specifically, Mr. Kaplan points out that the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, when weighing the merits of similar arguments to lower net metering benefits to customers of an investor-owned utility, I O Us, undertook a comprehensive analysis of the benefits and costs of net metering on non-solar rate payers and the utility. The P U C found that the arguments posed by the I O U for lowering the net metering credit were overstated and that the benefits provided by net metering were undervalued by those same I O Us. It is my perception that any well-intentioned assessment made by members of the Lyons Utilities and Engineering Board likely did not encompass the breadth, detail or accuracy of projections as one of the commissions by the P U C and thus any financial impact on Lyons non-solar rate payers or the town utility is to be taken with a grain of salt. Item three, valuing the net metering credit based on the price of out-of-state wind energy is to undervalue resident-generated local renewable energy. While utility-scale renewable energy example farm went, wind farm will always be more inexpensive to a utility than local distributed generation, the former adds zero value to a local economy. Less value when it comes to community resilience, which form has the potential to benefit Lyons should it experience another flood and a marginal value in a resident's sense of self-sufficiency or personal contribution to addressing climate change. To value a Lyons residence production of clean energy at a, at, as a lowest-cost commodity is an affront to their standing as a citizen of our town. Finally, and this is what I do not know, is how mean verifies that the wind energy purchased by the town is actually wind energy. The only definitive way that this is done in the broader market is through the retirement of renewable energy credits or R E Cs assigned to that renewable energy capacity. I would ask that you confirm this question of verifying we're getting what we paid for. Solar panels on a Lyons residence roof, on the other hand, is unquestionably verifiable and is undeniably, undeniable proof of the town's commitment to a cleaner, more sustainable planet. Number four, section thirteen dash two dash eighty B of the revised ordinance regarding the ten kilowatt capacity size restrictions. As the cost of solar has decreased dramatically in even the last five to six years, twenty-seven percent on average nationally from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty, according to the solar marketing intel company Energy Sage. Allowing people to buy more for the same or less coupled the increased size of most new homes over their predecessors and larger energy consumption due to electric vehicles, more electric devices, the average size of a new solar array national, nationally has increased from seven point nine kilowatts in twenty sixteen to ten kilowatts in twenty twenty. Again, according to Energy Sage. Without increasing the allowable size of a solar system without additional town approval beyond ten kilowatts is to turn a blind eye to the reality of the marketplace and is yet another disincentive to residents looking to invest in clean energy. It is my recommendation that a new size restriction without additional town oversight be set at fifteen kilowatts and that is, and that this limitation be reviewed in five years for consideration increasing array size to and of, as available roof space allows limit with respect to compliance with the current I F C International Fire Code. Number five, section thirteen dash two dash eighty E and H grandfathering in solar systems installed prior to November first, twenty twenty, section E and H sunsetting. Section E, throughout the presentations by the U E B to the B O T and to the Sustainable Futures Commission, there has always been an assurance that this new net metering policy only applies to new solar systems not yet installed. This is actually not the case when reading paragraph E and is instead a brazen act to depart from the commitments made by the town to residents who installed a solar system after November first, twenty twenty and before the B O T formally adopts this new ordinance. Paragraph H, sunsetting or the killing off of the grandfather clause further undermines any past assurances that older installations will not be subject to this new regressive net metering payout. While solar panels have a history of producing electricity well beyond twenty-five years after installation, reputable, reputable solar manufacturers warranty their panels for twenty years. Other components wear out and need replacement, for example, the inverter. Whether due to age or hail, roofs in the meantime need replacing, which for a solar owner requires the removal and reinstallation of the solar array. Furthermore, a home with a solar system may likely be occupied by multiple owners. All of these aforementioned situations, according to H, will reset a homeowner's net metering agreement to the new lower credit rate. Come January of twenty thirty, regardless, everyone will be switched to whatever net metering credit is in vogue at that time. For all of us who have committed to solar, both financially and because we want to distance ourselves from climate disruptive fossil fuel electric generation, the paragraphs in this section of the ordinance feels frankly predatory in nature and completely contrary to the town's commitments to sustainability as outlined in the Comprehensive and Environmental Sustainability Action Plans. Number six, section thirteen dash two dash eighty E and three, net metering reimbursement schedule. This paragraph effectively takes away a solar system owner's ability to roll any credits accumulated at the end of the calendar year into the following year since there's this language in the event that a negative balance remains at the end of the calendar year. The electric department will reimburse the customer for such negative balance at the C O G rate. By eliminating the option for someone to roll credits into the following year, which is what I remember opting to do in my net metering agreement years ago and instead accept a measly payout. What they have, what this, what that effectively does is force that homeowner to purchase at the full retail rate their energy needs that will not be augmented by their less productive solar systems from January through March due to the shorter winter days. Not allowing residents to, in effect, save for a rainy day by banking and rolling over credits is one more disincentive being applied by the town and does not recognize that distributed solar is a benefit to the grid and Lyons and not a liability that must be discouraged. Number seven, section thirteen dash two dash eighty G two. The town of Lyons will charge the customer an additional customer-owned renewable energy generation meter fee per month for administrative expense and additional meter cost that incurred for the required additional meter. Why should Lyons solar owners have to pay for the failure of the town's utility billing system to efficiently calculate the bidirectional flow of electricity through the meter? Also, how is this fee actually calculated? Is it arbitrary or the actual cost incurred to make this calculation? With issues I've brought forth, I hope it becomes clear that there are intended and unintended consequences to this new net metering policy that creates a large disincentive for residents wanting to literally put the power, renewable energy back in their own hands. Eleven oh three, while perhaps born of good intentions, is flawed in its assumptions. Rooftop solar is a fringe benefit bankrolled by non-solar residents. Disrespectful in its application, resident-generated solar is only seen as valuable out, as out-of-state sourced energy and counterproductive to addressing climate change with the all-the-above strategy that must be adopted if we have any chance of leaving the next generation of Lyons residents with a livable ecosystem. For these reasons, the B O T must vote against ordinance eleven oh three. Thank you, Dave Hatchamanji, two-hundred Welch Courts.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I had read that email and I thought that it contained uh, uh, some valuable information. Uh, this is a very talented man who works for Boulder County and, and, uh, and we got to uh, uh, listen to his uh, objections to eleven oh three. Um, are there any further uh, questions by the Board of Trustees at this time? Uh, let's see. I'm sorry. Are there any other public comments at this time from the public regarding ordinance eleven oh three? Madam Clerk?
No, sir, no one has their hand raised.
Thank you very much. I'll close the uh, uh, public hearing part of uh, of uh, ordinance eleven oh three uh, and entertain a motion. Mayor Proton Browning?
I move the adoption of ordinance eleven oh three, um, amending the Lyons Municipal Code concerning a change in that metering policy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second on uh, ordinance eleven oh three. Are there any comments? Mayor Proton?
I have an amendment.
Okay.
I would like in subsection, I would move to amend subsection thirteen-two dash eighty. H to change the date of January twenty twenty six to January thirty thirty.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second is described by uh mayor Proton. Do you want to give your reasoning, Mayor Proton?
Yes, um I paid attention to the citizen emails and the comments we heard tonight. And it's a very difficult estimation to do about what's a reasonable grandfathering period. I think the twenty twenty five years to match the useful life of the system is not the right measure. And I I I think what we've got in there now from the last meeting twenty twenty six is is too short. And I think the UEB did take a lot of time and they've worked on this for a long time, as Director Kaplan said for years. And and they believe looked at the when a lot of when a lot of people in town had installed these systems and what if there's such a thing as an average payback period, what it is. Their recommendation was to use a January thirty thirty day. As as the mayor said, this is this is a difficult area. It's certainly not in my area of expertise and when I get into those areas that I'm not don't consider myself anything close to an expert. I may not even have a good layman's understanding of it for that matter. I tend to rely on people who know more than about it than I do, and I think the people on the UEB do. They're they're smart people. They spend a lot more time studying this than I ever could. And the January thirty thirty day would be going back to their original recommendation. That may may not fit the will of a majority of the board, but I'm just my position is I'd like to go with the UAB's advice on this.
You seconded the motion or trustee though you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Browning, you are saying twenty thirty, right? You you seem to be saying thirty thirty. Twenty thirty.
Yeah, to go back to what the UEB recommended, which I believe was January twenty thirty, I may have I may have spoken.
Because thirty thirty is a long time away.
None of us are gonna be here.
Twenty thirty was my intention. I'm sorry.
You know, I had I had originally I had a I also had an amendment to that sun setting clause. That I was going to bring up at the behest of Ian Brighton, but he is he's basically said he wanted to have the sunset period extend to whenever the rate rate of rate return of investment would be up for each of the individual solar providers. I've heard tonight that it looks like the expected lifespan for these systems or the return on investment is about ten years. Ian happened to mention his was thirteen years and he's a couple, a couple of years shy of that, I guess. So I I'm perfectly willing to do the twenty thirty. It seems right and reasonable and I think it'll it will satisfy the concerns of the solar providers.
Good. Is there any other comments regarding the amendment? Mayor Proton.
In in response to trustee Lowell, yeah, I I read Ian Brighton's suggestion too. I I think it's impractical to try to calculate the return on investment for each of sixty different individuals. I think that's just I think that's something we could do. So you that's why that's why the suggestion was to kind of like shoot to cover the averages that I don't think you could track an individual. You probably could, but it would take a heck of a lot of time and effort by somebody.
Further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote on the amendment. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Angelo. Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Justice Carapace.
No.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Wa, what was your vote?
Aye.
Uh, the the amendment passes five to one. Are there any other amendments? Let's see. So we'll have a motion to approve eleven oh three as amended.
I think it's the
Already got that, sir. I'm sorry.
Oh, as amended? I thought we voted on the I thought we just voted on the amendment.
Right, but we had a motion to approve, then a motion to amend, so we vote on the amendment and we vote on the ordinance.
Okay, that always confuses me. So we'll vote on on ordinance eleven oh three. And then we'll have an opportunity to comment. Is that correct?
No, I think now is the time for comments or amendments if there are any further amendments. And then once that has concluded, then we'll vote on them ordinance as amended.
Okay, trustee Rogan.
Thank you, mayor. I I'd like to thank Director Kaplan and the UEB for all of the work that has gone into this ordinance. I know it was an incredible amount of work and I am going to be voting no on this ordinance. We made a commitment to solar owners and I think we need to live up to it. And there's a lot at play, you know. Local generation means local resiliency and I really think that we need to encourage that as much as possible. You know, the next natural disaster, somebody with solar might have, you know, refrigeration and air conditioning and somebody without solar may not. You know, and the the point about being able to verify that the energy that we're buying from mean actually is wind energy, I think is a very valid point. And I didn't hear anything about line loss. Getting the energy from the generation, the generation point to the consumer point. There's a great deal of energy loss that can happen in that line. And that contributes, you know, to to cost, to energy inefficiency. So I I appreciate the work that's gone into this, but it just comes down to we need to encourage solar, we need to encourage renewal renewable energy and we need to I believe keep our promise to the folks who bought their system.
Any further comments by members of the board of trustees? I I will be voting no as well. Very well prepared to be voted this evening, but it's very difficult for me to have as a municipality, and I know things change. Have given our word to people and incentivize them to install solar and then change our commitment to the to the concept. So I will be voting no as well, and that's the reason why. Any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, madam clerk.
Mayor Angelo. Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye. Aye.
Justice Carapace.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
No.
Ordinance eleven oh three passes by a vote of four to two. Moving on, could you please read the next item into the record, madam clerk?
Yes, item three is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance eleven oh four. An ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado amending chapter two, article eight, section one fifty C one of the Lyons municipal code concerning the responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Good, I think this one won't take as much time as it's somewhat simpler. Staff, could we please have some background?
I guess I'll get the staff background on this one. So this is a simple change to the boards and commissions or ordinance essentially is adding two words to the responsibilities of Parks and Rec Commission in words open space. The Parks and Rec Commission believe that their responsibilities need to be further defined to include open space. Isn't it's a simple amendment to do that.
Okay, any questions for staff by the board? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing in regard to ordinance eleven oh four. Are there any public comments? Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing and and ask for any comments by the board of trustees.
Motion.
Excuse me, could we could we have a motion?
I move the adoption of on second reading of ordinance eleven oh four, amending municipal code concerning responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
You have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Our comments. Any comments? Like I said, this is a simpler one. Seeing no comments, I'll call for the vote, madam clerk.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning. Justice Carapace.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Ordinance eleven oh four passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, could you please read the next item into the on the agenda into the record?
Yes, the next item is the second reading in public hearing on ordinance eleven oh five. An ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado amending ordinance ten fifty seven, section seven dash forty B regulating trees and shrubs.
Counselor, would you like to take this one also?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. So if you remember from the last meeting, this is an ordinance change. Essentially reincorporating what was previously in the tree and shrub ordinance. You may remember there was a mix up in the last time this ordinance was amended to change up the tree list. And whereby inadvertently and over the wrong version of the ordinance was used to draft the change in the tree list of which took out an important section concerning maintenance of trees in the right of way. You will see reflected in the draft the changes that were voted on in first reading, which is to take out the piece concerning symmetry. And so that has been reflected in this draft.
Thank you, counsel. Are there any questions for counselor? If not, I'll open the public hearing in regard to eleven oh four. Are there any public comments? Madam Clerk.
No, sir. I don't see anyone.
I'll close the public hearing in regard to ordinance eleven oh four and entertain a motion at this time.
I think we're on eleven oh five, mayor, right?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Eleven oh five. I apologize.
I move the adoption of ordinance eleven oh five, amending the Lyons municipal code with regard regulating trees and shrubs.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any comments at this time? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Justice Rogan.
Aye.
Justice Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Lowell.
Aye.
Justice Carapace.
Aye.
Ordinance eleven oh five passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent agenda into the record? But let me ask first, would anybody like to take a break right now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take let's take a ten minute break. We'll reconvene at at twenty five to ten. Thank you. Okay, we're ready to go. Let's see. Madam Clerk, could you please read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes, item one under the consent agendas resolution twenty twenty one dash seventy. A resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado approving the second amendment to the professional services agreement with Murray Smith Incorporated. For on-call engineering services. Item two, resolution twenty twenty one dash seventy one. A resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado supporting a Dola Clean Energy Initiative CEI grant. For a Lyons solar farm and battery storage project. Item three are the June accounts payable and that should read July, sorry. Item four is the July first twenty twenty one ethics committee committee meeting minutes. And item five is the July sixth twenty twenty one regular board of trustees meeting minutes.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there, are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number two, please.
Okay. Any others by anybody? If not, I'll call for the vote on the consent agenda.
Mayor Angelo.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning.
Aye.
Justice Rogan.
Aye.
Justice Wa.
Aye.
Aye.
Justice Carapace.
Aye.
The the consent agenda passes unanimously. Justice Carapace, your concern about twenty 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 one dash seventy one?
Yeah, just to Aaron clarified for me some of my questions in the in his report. So again, thanks, Aaron. That the extra monies that we have in the electric fund that we all dealt with in the budget of last year for the issue of the twenty one budget indicated that be about some of the last group we had was about three thousand dollars after three month reserve. So Aaron, the the amounts you gave us in your report, the nine seventy one, nine hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, that does not have the three month reserve taken out of it, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Did we and I forgot to follow up. I got busy this afternoon. I got got to follow up and email to you. Do we know what the estimated three month reserve amount is?
If we're just gonna use the three months of total expenses, it was six hundred something thousand. I could pull it up from the budget. Thirty seven.
Six, the six sixty seven?
Um, no, unrestricted with six thirty seven. Oh, three months, six thirty, six hundred and thirty three thousand is three months of expenditures.
Six hundred and thirty three thousand, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that that not touching that reserve, you know, with going the battery option that we have, what we have to pay with long speed coming, you feel comfortable with us going forward?
With Yes, the question might be, do we if we could do it without any kind of bonding? If that's what you're asking, I'm not sure. We would
Well, we after if we go into budget season, we at the end of the year says, okay, we should have at least three hundred thousand dollars around for capital improvements. After with keeping our our six hundred and six thirty three thousand for reserves. You're comfortable with doing that, using that money if we need to kick in two hundred thousand, two seventy five for a battery? That we for the option that we asked you to look at.
Yes, one might our current rates on the electric have still include the hundred thousand that we were putting aside each year for the electric meters. That was started about four years ago, and so the rates were not adjusted for that. So potentially that is still built in. That we would have that extra money so that next year we should still be building up more reserve because we've been focused on that for the electric fund from when it was down at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that and for my fellow board members to know that after the flood in twenty sixteen, I do believe one or two of these funds we were we didn't have reserves and that that puts that puts you in a tricky situation. So we have slowly built these back and kind of want to make sure we don't use them. The other question I had was I'd asked, I think at the UEB meeting. And this Brandon might be Uh, and this, Brandon might be able to answer this, are we, or even if this are assignments? For a particular reason, if we, if the costs, you know, go high or whatever, are we allowed to borrow from one enterprise fund or the other?
No.
Generally. Enterprise fund can loan to the general fund?
Okay.
To other enterprise funds, um. Gosh, I guess I would have to look into that a little bit.
Can the general fund fund or loan to an enterprise fund?
Um, not without some special um, voter approvals.
Okay.
Generally, the enterprise funds are supposed to be self-sufficient, and that's the general rule, so. There are ways to do things, um. Combined funds, you know, you could, you know, certainly do a bond issuance, uh, you know, there may voter approval of loaning money, but I mean, generally, they're supposed to be self-sufficient funds. It gets complicated for that one.
And, and the reason I'm asking that comes up to this question is, and uh, the U E V provided us a very nice. Spreadsheet of the cost, you know, where our rate of return is, how much money is being put in. You know, with the calculated out for that rate of return of cost for battery replacement, cost of maintenance, that sort of thing. The battery, should something happen to it, we are saving, it looks like on the sh- on the uh, U E V spreadsheet, twenty thousand a year being set aside to cover that cost of replacement. Should something happen to it early, lightning hits, something bad, does insurance cover that, or utility fund here have to pay out to replace that?
Not sure about that one.
If Victoria, it's, it'll be an asset, obviously, so would that, is that? But I don't know our limits on certain things.
Um, I guess we'd have to see, there's so many specialized insurance claims now, you know, they're, they're very detailed and specific. We would have to see if there's anything specific to batteries, I've never. Um, I mean, if we have it listed on our asset schedule, it should be covered, but I don't know if there's any exceptions to.
Yeah.
And there is a. Category in the spreadsheet for insurance. I don't, if we're specifically needing to cover this.
We can, we can find that out and get back to you on it.
Well, yeah, I just, just want to make sure, should something happen before we have enough money saved up to replace it, it shouldn't, we can, you know. Whilst we don't dip in our reserve, we can, we can replace it, so that's fine. That's all I have, I thank you again, Aaron, and in the U E V for everything you guys did putting this together, so. If no one else has any comments, I would, I'll move to pass.
I have comments.
Okay, then I'll wait.
Thank you, um, I want to know the timing of the submittal of the uh, application to DOLA. Because uh, um, number one, we're gonna have to have an election. Number two, we don't know whether it's gonna be successful, and uh, um. So I would want to understand the strategy of what we're gonna do first. If we submit a grant to DOLA and they say, yes, and, and the, the election. Uh, isn't successful, where does that put us, you know, so. I, I have other concerns, but, but I would like to know what we're thinking of in regard to the timing. Of the uh, DOLA application.
As soon as possible, tomorrow. Um, I did just get comments back, again, we've been working pretty closely with our DOLA representative. And he was willing to review the application and check it and is aware of this concern, and that was one of the concerns. From the very start was that we don't have the location tied up one hundred percent, that there are these concerns there. Um, and I think it's going to be something that they take into consideration before they issue the grant, that will be a concern. If there was a grant of equal value or equal merit to them, and it didn't have this type of concern. I would think they would go with that one, because they wouldn't have to have that worry. But they were confident or pushing to, that they thought it was worth going forward on this. They're also trying to gauge some type of confidence on something like an election, and while others. Can sometimes be over-exuberant in their expectations, I think we all know that it's up to the people and you never know what's going to happen. We are including in there, um, a backup location of either the dog park or the ten acres behind the dog park. With the hopes that we could make one of those locations work.
And uh, is DOLA aware of that also?
It is in the application. The primary location for the project would require a vote by the people of Lyons to allow solar on property zone for parks and open space. The ballot question is being written up and should be on the November second election, and it's also in there about a backup location. And the concerns about the amendment for Boulder County, so they are listed in the grant.
Okay. Good, good, that's a good thing, um. Uh, let's see, I don't have a, I don't have any further questions if uh, if uh. Uh, DOLA is aware that, that, that the possibility of, of having uh, uh. An, an alternative site exists and they don't have a problem with it, I just hope that the timing. If we weren't successful on the election, doesn't cost us the grant, but if they're aware of those two additional uh, uh. Locations, I have no objections to passing resolution twenty twenty-one there seventy-one. Uh, Trustee Caravus, oh, excuse me, Mayor Proton?
Uh, we're, we're doing comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that Trustee Caravus's inquiries about the health of the electric fund are very valid. And what we're voting on tonight is applying for a grant and. Depending on what happens with the electric fund between now and the time the grant might be awarded. And it, it obviously will have to wait past the election in November for us to. Applying for a grant doesn't, isn't the same thing as accepting a grant, and if our electric fund balance was not sufficient to do this without. Without trying to do a, a bond issue, and I don't think that's a very efficient way to finance this, I'd have, I'd have concerns about it. The other factor that we should know by November second, hopefully before then. Is whether the summit thing, summit deal is going forward, not in summits. Um, payment of electric connection fees will have a substantial effect on the electric fund balance, so that's another unknown, so. Um, all we're doing tonight is applying for a grant, but whether we ultimately are awarded that grant and accept that grant. We should look again at the electric fund balance situation at that time.
Any further comments? Um, have we moved to uh, approve a resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-one yet?
I do so now.
Trustee Caravus? Do we have a second?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-one?
Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion in a second for approval of uh, resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-one, any further comments? I seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Mayor Angelo?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Browning?
Aye.
Trustee Lowell?
Aye.
Trustee Wa?
Aye.
Broken?
Aye.
Aye.
And Trustee Caravus?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-one passes unanimously. Um, let's see, see if I have this right, could you read the next item? On the agenda into the record, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next item is resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventy-two. A resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, approving an amendment to the Summit Housing Group Development Agreement.
Um, staff?
Thank you, um, as you all know, we've been having these discussions for quite a while regarding um, Lyons Valley Town Homes, also. Referred to as Summit Housing Group. Um, tonight before you, we have a consideration of a fourth amendment to the Development Plan Agreement between the town and Lyons Valley Town Homes. Following um, lengthy discussions and an executive session in recent weeks, so um. It's my understanding that um, there are some proposed amendments to this, I don't know if the attorney wants to. Move forward with suggesting what those might be.
I, I don't think it's appropriate at this time, I think when the time comes, um, you know, for amendments, then we can discuss this at this time.
You want to go through the agreement, or do you want me to do that?
Um, either way, I mean, if you, I'm happy to, you want to go through it, I can provide additional commentary, or we haven't previously discussed this, so however you want.
Okay. So let's pull that one up then. So this, um, this agreement has already had several, several different amendments to it. Um, the fourth amendment would uh, basically um. Allow some concessions to summit due to the hot, the high um, cost of construction cost in our market right now. I'm having trouble getting mine pulled up here. There it is, vision three. There it is, okay, um, the um. The main changes would have to, that are being suggested are uh, that all of the amendments from the first and, first three amendments. Would be incorporated. Uh, we would consider some landscaping changes to the, what is currently being proposed on their plans. To allow some more native um, landscaping. And especially in the rear yards of the multifamily units, that would save um, some funds. Or also, uh, there's a proposal to waive the use of, the wa- waive the use tax. That would be generated from this project, um, as well as the town review fees. And consider the uh, an exchange of. Uh, three lots of land in lieu of the park's in- impact fees that are traditionally collected with the development such of the, such as this. Um, and then also another modification to the actual plans would be to replace the garages. In the single-family homes with carports to save on costs. And then there is a, um, currently a proposal that is listed in the packet that you received. That there'd be a consideration of up to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of um, water and sewer uh, utility fees being potentially um. What's the correct word?
Way they're offset fund, so the idea is that up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan Act funds would be. Available to offset construction costs for utilities.
If, if cost increase.
Correct, so under the current draft, I'm sorry, Victoria, um.
That's fine, and that's, and that, that's the final item that's being proposed, that's a very high level overview. Um, between um, the use tax, uh, that's being proposed. Um, those total approximately, you have that offhand?
It's close to six hundred thousand dollars, I think, I can pull up this.
But the use tax is approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. The town review fees are approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. And then um, the one hundred, up to one hundred and fifty. The total with their savings that they think they can see from garages, carports and landscaping. The total package is right around six hundred thousand dollars of consideration. Um, for this project to be able to move forward, um, if the town wants to contribute any or all of those items. We have that with Mr. Caps was summoned, and I see he's on here as well. Um, at this point, they are very appreciative of the town considering. Um, assisting them with this, their project, as they said earlier, they're committed to the project and would appreciate anything the town feels they could. Help to offset these high construction costs in our market right now.
Do you need to add anything, Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, one thing in particular, which is, um, one of the items listed is that exchange of the three lots in front of park impact fees. Um, as noted in the agreement, that is not currently permitted under the code. Um, unlike other portions of the code, there was no waiver provision, there's no um, acceptance in lieu of, and so um. You know, that portion of this agreement is more or less contingent upon the board. Um, deciding to change the code to allow for the acceptance of those lots in lieu of the parks fee. And so um, just so you all know that if this passes. Um, we would have to come back with an ordinance amending that portion of the code to permit proposed action, so. Um, you know, we have a, in Colorado, we have a principle, um, that doesn't allow us to encroach upon a future legislative body, we call it. Uh, which means we can't bind the hands of a future board, so we can't guarantee we're gonna pass that code. Um, amendment to allow for that, but what all we're simply doing is saying we're gonna, you know, you know. Take reasonable steps towards amending the code to allow for it. And so, and if that goes through, then of course they'd be entitled to exchange us three lots in exchange for the parks impact fees.
I guess there's one more thing we should mention is, um, their original overage in. Uh, project cost was approximately one point two million dollars.
Yep.
And so this contribution would um, potentially. Even out at about half of, half of those overages that they're facing at this point.
And things that are, there's a few things to the staff's were working on to lower costs that are not listed in here, it's not really appropriate for this type of agreement, but. That would include a local um, location versus the hauling of materials. And, you know, having uh, cheaper, some cheaper construction, you know, locally sourced construction materials, so it also saves money, so. Those things are, they're nothing that's in the agreement, um, they're in the original agreement or in this change, but also additional things that. Um, staff has, have looked at to lower costs of the construction project.
Uh, any further staff comments?
Um, only that, you know, this is a, a starting place, um, this is not an easy agreement to draft, um, for a variety of reasons. Um, you know, trying to, you know, essentially estimate what the market's gonna do and how to index that is not easy. Um, and as I think several of us have discussed at this point, that there's no, there's not really a perfect solution to do that, so. This is a starting place, this is the board's agreement, um, you know, I take no pride in ownership over this, so feel free to. Make whatever changes you want, um, but the draft as um, presented to you tonight has been reviewed by Summit and has been deemed acceptable, so.
Are there any questions for staff? Trustee Lowell?
Yeah, I just have a housekeeping matter in uh. Item five, the waiver of the use tax, the second sentence, it's really stilted, that language just doesn't work.
I have to look at it.
Such a waiver shall, waiver shall, waiver occur.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it was already corrected, I think it was supposed to be a version uploaded that already fixed that issue.
Okay.
That there was a shall occur happened twice, it looks like, and I, over the weekend I fixed that, and it should have been uploaded, I believe it was today.
Anything, you have to do that?
And I also have a, I also have a legal question for Attorney Detman. Um, regarding item seven. The three undeveloped lots that, that the town is looking to uh, acquire. Can you tell me what the town's liability is? On a town-owned property with a known and recognized hazard, if that hazard hasn't been corrected? I, I only bring that up because I was involved in a similar situation with the city of Fort Collins where. My wife broke her hand on a municipal sidewalk, and you know, the insurance covered it, but there was like a hundred and thirty dollar copay, and I simply asked. This city of Fort Collins if they would make good on the hundred and thirty. And they said, no, because they did not know of the hazard. So they couldn't pay, they said, on the other hand, if the, if they were aware of the hazard, then they certainly would have considered paying the extra hundred and thirty dollars. Could you give me some insight on that?
So the Governmental Immunity Act, um, that covers a lot of potential liabilities for the town, there has a special exception for sidewalks, which includes if. Um, if you basically know, um, the condition of the sidewalk and don't fix it, then government's liable for that. So it, it adjusts the standard for sidewalks specifically, is that maybe you've, some of what you heard. Um, so that, to address that first kind of, you know, colloquy, but secondly, concerning these properties specifically. Um, so what the Governmental Immunity Act covers is negligence, it doesn't uh, cover gross negligence or um. Willful and wanton misconduct. And so it'd be up to a jury to determine. And so it'd be up to a jury to determine, you know, one, I would, you know, I think if the town were to acquire these lots, you know, fencing would be placed and other signs probably be put up saying, you know, the nature of these lots. I would hope so. But we would have to be shown by a jury to be initially grossly negligent, willful, wanton as to our ownership of these, of these properties. And then two, someone be injured. And so that would be what we require for the town to be liable. Otherwise, it'd be covered by governmental immunity, any sort of regular negligence. You know, we would be precluded from us being liable. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On any further questions? Mayor Proton?
On the fencing, it's my understanding that Summit would still be putting up the fencing that they had agreed to put up before the town. It wouldn't be the town's responsibility to fence that Summit would do it. It's, that was part of the agreement, because we specifically discussed that. So I don't think that part of it.
I would agree. We did not propose to take that out of the agreement.
Further comments? We now entertain a motion and then move to amendments, Counselor?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think at this point, we would motion, um, second, any amendments and comments at that point. And then, you know, a vote on the final as amended.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mayor Proton?
I move the approval of Resolution 2021-72, approving a development plan agreement between Lyons Valley Town Homes LP and the town by approving the fourth amendment to the subdivision improvement agreement for Lyons Valley Park filing eight.
And who would like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any amendments? To the motion? Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes. One of the things we discussed at the last meeting, and it was in response to what I thought was a valid question or issue raised by Trustee Lowell was we're granting, proposing to grant these financial incentives and concessions to Summit at a time when construction costs have increased, and that's the reason for their request. And the question he asked, I thought was a good one, which was for Grant these concessions now, but for some reason, construction costs decline over the course of the project. Should we really give that many concessions? And so there was discussion about some kind of a mechanism to adjust downward the amount of financial concessions if construction costs decline. And who knows whether they will or won't. Because historically they've risen, but we're in weird times when part of the year you've got COVID shutdowns and part of the year you don't. So I guess I put my foot in my mouth by suggesting that we could try to come up with some index to gauge construction costs. And that's what my amendment goes to, and it was circulated. Went back and forth and exchanged emails with Attorney Ditman on it, and then he circulated it to the, to the board, and I won't read it into the record. But I guess, I guess I should offer the amendment formally before I discuss it further. So I, I moved the amendment that was circulated to use a construction cost index to adjust the amount of the $150,000 utility offset amount if construction costs decline. And I believe the clerk has the exact wording as well.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, as stated by Mayor Proton Browning. Any discussion in regard to that amendment? Mayor Proton?
Let me add, so after making that suggestion in the last meeting, then I began the search for an appropriate construction cost index. And it proved more difficult than anticipated. We could do lumber prices, those are available. You could do concrete prices, those are available, but that, those don't really reflect necessarily overall construction costs. And I spent considerable time both online and on the phone with the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics that publishes, believe it or not, hundreds of indexes relating to various types of construction costs. And there may well be one in, that's available free from the federal government that would reflect the type of residential construction costs we're talking about. But after spending several hours trying to find it and find how it was compiled, I kind of gave up. It was, there's a lot of stuff on that website and I couldn't navigate it. I found a couple of private sector construction cost indexes and looked at those. There's a small cost to access them, the one that I ended up proposing in this, from a company called E N R. I think it costs $108 for, to, for a one-year membership where you can access all the data and under this amendment, that Summit would pay $108, which is small potatoes compared to the benefits they'd be getting. And what I liked about this one was it included lumber costs, it included concrete costs, it included steel costs, and it included labor costs. Now, that's not all of Summit's costs, but it's, it's the major components of them. So this was the best I could find. It's not ideal. And, you know, the principle here is if costs do decline, then we don't have to fork over the whole 150,000. And basically, we, with, with the last of the $50,000 payments, this would be paid out in three tranches, like we talked about last time. Wouldn't occur until the final certificate of occupancy happened, which is at the end of the project. So you'd have, we'd have basically $50,000 in reserve, which should be enough to cover any construction cost index declines unless construction costs decline by more than a third during the course of this project. And if that happens, we're in a brave new world. I've never heard of construction costs declining by more than 33% over about a, you know, one and a half or two-year period. So I think we're safe in that regard. And can't say this is, this is perfect. And if somebody can find a better index, you know, be my guest. But best I could come up with on two weeks' notice, I guess. And that's, that's the proposed amendment. And it's to paragraph nine of, of the agreement that Attorney Drift, Attorney Ditman drafted.
Any additional comments? Trustee Rogan?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate this amendment, Mayor Proton. I think it's a good one. And I just a few days ago, read a Forbes article about how lumber costs have peaked and are now going to decline. So I think this is extremely good insurance for us to get our money back. So thank you. I'm going to be voting yes.
Trustee Wa.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I agree. Thank you, Mayor Proton, for this amendment. I will be voting for this amendment, but I am fundamentally against the town contributing $150,000 in cash. So I'm probably going to vote against the resolution, but I am going to vote for this. Vote for this amendment because if it does pass, then we need to have this. I think we're getting into speculating. I think we know that prices are going to go down. So let, you know, and I, and I applaud staff on finding other ways to save the builder money. I think we're gone above and beyond with the other offers, and I, I just don't agree with the 150,000 cash. We, we could put that towards other uses.
Trustee Lowell, I know you wanted to comment.
No, I, the only I, I commend Mayor Proton Browning on the, the work he did on this. It seems like, it seems like a reasonable solution. My only question is, when does the clock start ticking on this? Maybe Counsel can tell us. If, if we pass this amendment and we pass the fourth amendment to the subdivision agreement, does that start the clock ticking? In other words, at what point do these commodity prices have a baseline? And when do we start measuring that?
And, and the original one, it was based on the April estimates, but I think in the one that Mayor Proton drafted, I believe it starts on the date that this is executed. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. Because, and the reason for making that change was if we look back to the April ones of Summit, then we would need to dig into how Summit came up with those April estimates. So we're really just starting it as of the signature date of the, of the agreement.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All right, then we'll vote on the amendment.
Mayor Angelo? Mayor Proton Browning?
Hi.
Trustee Rogan?
Hi.
Trustee Wa.
Hi.
Trustee Lowell?
Hi.
Trustee Caravis?
Hi.
The amendment passes unanimously. Are there any further amendments? Trustee Lowell?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like to make a motion to delete. Hold on a second. To delete item seven of the fourth amendment to the subdivision agreement. To de, to delete it in its entirety.
And could you state what that is, sir? For the record?
You? Do you want to read the whole paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't need, the title, I think sufficient property.
Okay. Item seven, property in lieu of park impact fees.
Okay. So basically, we're talking about the, the three lots. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted that for the record. Let's see. Let's see, a motion has been made to amend. Is there a second? There is not. Therefore, that amendment dies, that offer of an amendment dies. Are there any other amendments? Trustee Lowell?
I have one more amendment. And it reads, upon passage of the fourth amendment to Lyons Valley Park filing eight subdivision improvement agreement by the town of Lyons Board of Trustees, there shall be no further town of Lyons financial aid or financial incentives considered for the benefit of the Summit Housing Group by either town staff or the Board of Trustees. Further, the town of Lyons staff and Board of Trustees shall consider no further amendments to the SIA expressly for the financial benefit of the Summit Housing Group.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second is stated by Trustee Lowell. Any discussion? Trustee Lowell?
Yeah, the point of all this is that we really need to put a stamp on this and get moving. This, this amendment will ensure that there's no further concessions or financial aid will be considered. You know, given the delays of this project over now three and a half years and the financial reasons for doing so, let's recall that last year, they abandoned Track A citing the $2 million cost to put up the multifamily units on the top of the hill. They've also had to buy single-family lots from LVP owner Keith Bell continually. We went from 11 to 19, now we're up to 24 single-family lots. All of these are costing them money. So I just want to ensure that once we pass this fourth amendment to the SIA, that this is it. And that they're not going to come back to us and be asking for further concessions.
Can I ask you what your position would be in regard to the town? Entering into perhaps grants that they may be able to qualify for if the town backed that possibility? Do you consider that a further concession?
No, I don't consider that a further concession. As long as there's no matching grants involved, as long as it's a straight, you know, 100% grant that covers the cost.
Thank you. Trustee Rogan?
Thank you. I have a question for Attorney Ditman. And that is, my understanding is that this board cannot bind future boards to decisions. And so how would an amendment like this work if a new board were seated?
It's a great question. It's one thing I wanted to address is that you could certainly place this language in the agreement, but would not be enforceable at all. And the reason is because I mentioned earlier with concern to the other matter is that in Colorado, we have a principle of legislative encroachment. You can't bind the hands of a future board, including this board. And so the board wants to make a future decision, it can go back on its previous decision, more or less. And so you could put this amendment into the agreement, even if it's effective as to staff. But if the board, this, this board or a future board went into, yeah, amend this SAA, yeah, again, to take that piece out, it could. There'd be no restriction on its ability to do that.
So that was a great question, and thank you, Counselor, for the clarification. There's been a a motion to amend in a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote on that. Mayor Proton?
Just real quickly, I'll be voting no on this. I agree with the sentiment behind it. I think at least as one board member, I'm, I would be quite opposed to any future substantial financial concessions, but I, I think this is a little bit broad. I don't think you should close the door on everything. I can't think of one right now, but if there's some minor tweak we need to make, to make later, we should be able to do that. And Attorney, you said we could. I think this goes too far, but I think at least speaking for me, I think Summit should be, understand that, that we've gone about as far as we can go on this. And so I'm going to know on this, but I, I agree with the sentiment behind it.
Any further comments, Trustee Wa?
I think, I think that a conversation about how this can be changed, we, we did that earlier today with the net metering. You know, I, I'm going to be voting yes for this because I, I feel very strongly and, and I feel with, with Trustee Lowell, that this should be put on the record and that this is what this board wants. Now, it sounds like some, some are opposed because there may be something in the future that's unforeseen that we would have to go back and change it. I would imagine that, you know, this board or future boards would be pragmatic enough to make that decision. But I think it's important for, for this board and for me personally, and I'll be voting for it for this reason, to state that enough is enough is enough. And you know, that's why I'm going to vote for it. And, you know, I, I don't envy future boards or even this board to have to make a decision to go against that, but I'm going to have to vote for it. Specifically for the reasons that Trustee Lowell is proposing it.
Any further comments? I'll see, now I'll call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Angelo? No?
No.
Mayor Proton Browning?
No.
Trustee Lowell?
Hi.
Trustee Wa?
Hi.
Rogan?
No.
And Trustee Caravis?
No.
Are the amendment fails? Okay. Are there any further amendments? Then we will vote on Resolution 2021-72 as amended. Is that correct procedure, Attorney Ditman?
That's 100% correct.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Angelo?
Hi.
Mayor Proton Browning?
Hi.
Trustee Caravis?
Hi.
Trustee Wa? I'm sorry, sir.
No.
Trustee Rogan?
Hi.
And Trustee Lowell?
No.
Resolution 2021-72 passes order two. Congratulations on Mr. Capps. Hopefully, we'll have our affordable housing sooner rather than later. Could you please read the next item on the agenda into the record, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next item is discussion direction to regulate permit RV parking at the wastewater treatment facility.
Staff?
This is actually an item requested on behalf of the board. I did risk, I did submit a staff report since we all did discuss it at a staff meeting. I don't know if you want me to go through that, if you want the board to discuss first.
I think, let me, I'll turn it over to the Mayor Proton because I think since Trustee Miller is not with us tonight, that, that he was the one that, that, that has I think, uh, since, uh, Trusty Miller is not with us tonight, that, uh, that he was the one that, that, that has the most interest in this particular concept. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, yeah, I have some comments, but I guess first maybe we'll see, does anybody have questions of the staff or Town Administrator before I say anything? Because it, I don't want to preempt anybody else's questions.
Are there any questions? Uh, Trusty Wa?
So this entire area is in the floodway?
Except for, there's a little tiny corner that's in, on an island, which is where we were going to place the restroom facility for this area. Other than that, the whole thing's in a floodway. Yeah.
Only question?
Any further questions? For staff? Continue, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, this subject came up, um, while we were discussing the parking ordinance. Uh, and I went back and, and looked at the, the minutes of the meeting at which we approved the, the parking ordinance. And there were three different trustees, uh, who raised this possibility, expressed interest in it. And in fact, the actual motion to change the normal effective date of the parking ordinance from normally 30 days to 364 days was made specifically to see if this, if, if we could find an RV parking area in the meantime, and that, and we knew that the area near the wastewater treatment facility was not going to be available for six months or so because it was being used uh, for staging for the Second Avenue Bridge. It was, I, I was kind of taken aback when I saw the cover memo, which all it says about that whole process of the parking was that the, the Board of Trustees considered but did not pass ordinance 1088, which would have regulated RV parking on the streets of Lyon. That's suggests that we didn't pass a parking ordinance. Actually, we did pass ordinance 1092. And we specifically talked about doing this because we were regulating RV parking on the streets of Lyon. So I, I didn't, that part of the cover memo kind of frankly floored me that it didn't give an accurate portrayal of what we did and what we discussed. There's some other thing, there's a whole list of objections in here to, to why this won't work. Some things that, that are basically irrelevant, no, this wouldn't get done during the time that that space is leased to, to plan, to grass for two events this summer, this month and next. Uh, it's not going to interfere with the Venus to Miles race in August. We're not going to have it done by that if we decide to do it. So it's just like everything but the kitchen sink, somebody could throw up, could think of was thrown in here. Um, so should a majority of the board decide to, direct staff to proceed, uh, on, on, on an RV parking area, uh, in this, in this, it would be the job of the staff to implement the board's decision not to find roadblocks to throw in the way of the board's decision. Maybe the majority will decide not to do it. Yeah, this, it, the floodway is an issue, but we have 17 RV parking spaces in, in the Meadow Park that are upstream of the two main bridges in town. We have 22 tiny homes in, in Riverbend that are upstream of those two bridges. I think, that there, there are ways to deal with, with the flood risk. And not just, the obvious way would be to have the least, put all the, the risk of flood or any theft or fire or anything else on the RV owners. We would also probably need to do something like there were, I believe there's some arrangements in place like to clear the, the tiny homes out of Riverbend if there's a potential flood there. Uh, we would probably need to have each, um, RV owner not only accept their responsibility to move it in the event of fire, flood, or other hazard, but to also probably designate a backup person to be available for contact if, uh, in the event it needs to be moved. It's kind of the system we have for, short-term vacation rentals. If there's a problem, somebody has, is designated, the owner is who you call, but they have to designate someone as a backup. So I think you could do that. Clearly, there's some things that need to be worked out. Um, I don't think we would ask, I don't think Sersa would ensure this and they shouldn't ensure it. I think this would be, there would be minimal cost to doing something like this. I think it's basically, I, I don't know, just designate probably 10 to 12 spaces available. And the concept here is if we're not going to let people with big RVs park them on town streets anymore, if we're able to provide a place for them to park, we should give them that option, uh, rather than just simply ticket them and leave it up to them. And looking back at the minute, at, at the minutes of the meeting where we approved the, uh, parking ordinance, and several citizens spoke up at that meeting and said, please don't make us move our, our RVs because we don't have any place local to park them. So this is responding to citizen requests when we passed the ordinance. And speaking for myself, I've had three different citizens unprompted come to me in the last couple of months and say, hey, are they going to do that RV parking area that was being talked about? Because I think it's a great idea. These are RV owners that park them on town streets and in cul-de-sacs now. Would rather not do that, but don't have any place locally to park them. So, I think there's some hurdles to be, uh, to be jumped to do this, but I don't think we should, should, should right up front just say, no, I don't do it because there's some issues to be worked out. I think we should direct staff to try to figure out a way to do it, not, not reasons not to do it. Uh, because I think a number, and Trusty Miller also, I'd also add, the government memo didn't mention that she requested this item too. She's expressed a lot of interest in making RV parking available. This would not be with hookups. It would be simply an open air parking area. I think citizens would appreciate this. I think a number of board members have expressed an interest and I'd like to direct staff to see if they could figure out a way to accomplish this. And if there's some insurmountable obstacle they come across in doing that, then they can bring it to us. But I think it needs some careful study with a target date that we discussed without loading on at, at the time of the parking ordinance, uh, being, uh, January of next year to have it in place honor before then, because that's when the new ordinance would take effect. In fact, that's why the January 2022 date was set so that we'd have time to look at something like this. So I, I think it's something worth pursuing.
Trusty Wa?
I'd like to just point out that the, the only, um, RV sites in a floodway in the Town of Lyons are owned by the Town of Lyons. The tiny homes are in the flood plain, not in the floodway. So I just want to make that clear. And that was part of a flood development plan and part of, uh, an onerous amount of work that we've had everyone who's wanted to do something in a flood plain, uh, let alone a floodway go through. I agree that the general tone of this memo is finding everything that's wrong with, with why we can't do this idea. But the floodway is just a deal breaker for me. I mean, it just, it just makes no sense at all to store RVs in a floodway. I mean, it ju- it, it just makes absolute no sense at all. I'm not saying that it's not a great idea. I'm not saying that we shouldn't find a place to do it. But it not in a floodway. I mean, it, I just can't even believe that that's, oh, it's just a floodway. We'll just get them to sign a waiver. That, that is completely against what we have made every other citizen do in this town with regard to floodway and flood plan plane, flood plane planning. So yes, I think generally this, the tone of this memo is, is, is no, no, no. But it only needed the first sentence to be no to me. So let's find, let's find somewhere else. This is something that we need, but the wastewater treatment facility in a floodway is not the place.
Trusty Rogan?
I agree that the floodway is a complete deal breaker. And I would point out that the RVs that are parked in Laverne Johnson Park have people right there who will drive them out of Laverne Johnson Park if there's a flash flood warning. We, you can't guarantee that that would happen. Um, I, I just, yeah, it's not the right place. I would instead encourage staff to look for other places. I don't know, maybe there's something in the eastern corridor that could be worked out with one of the property owners there who might be willing to do some RV storage. You know, I think we need to think outside the box. I think the town needs this. I think it would be a huge benefit to the town. And, um, so, yeah, I don't think we should move forward with this particular location.
Any other comments? Administrator Simonson, I would like you to weigh in on this because you're the, you're the floodplain administrator. And, uh, basically you have the authority in regard to issues like this. Are there, are there FEMA restrictions? Are there, are there federal restrictions? I need to be made aware of what restrictions there are uh, in regard to the use of the floodway.
Yes, um, and I'm, honestly, they, you know, it's not the tone that, again, we're against doing this. It's just the first step and the first hurdle is the floodway. And if you can't meet that, then none of the rest matter. And as the floodplain administrator, if I got an application to do long-term RV storage, and again, I don't know how long we're talking about. Are we only going to allow people certain times of the year? Are we going to have it free in the summer so that we can still use it for special events and get people using Black Bear in the River Quarter to park here instead of uh, clogging up the residential streets? So I, I, there's, you know, this is, this was just supposed to be a discussion as far as I, I knew. Um, I met with all of my department heads and I asked them, is there anything, you know, we're missing? Is there anything positive about this? And no one had anything. Yes, we agree that the public, if you guys want to assist them to find a place, we should do that. And I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, restriction wise, in a floodway, um, yes, the hoops that, um, uh, Trusty Wa was referring to, they have to have a plan if we go into a warning to get, you know, those, their tiny homes removed. If it is totally unsupervised in this setting and we were trying to find, I guess I thought you were thinking more like 50 or 60, not 10 or 12. So that could make a difference. Maybe we can carve out 10 or 12 on our little island. That's a possibility. What's interesting is just as you heard from people, I heard from three camper owners that said, absolutely not. This is not a town business. This should be a private enterprise. And that's going to look really crappy in our brand new parking lot. So I mean, I, you can hear all sorts of things like every issue we deal with. But, um, you're not to have a long-term storage facility unless you have permission from FEMA. So, you know, like, they didn't like us using this for construction sites. But they knew that the, there were equipment on site to push dirt away if we went into that warning. So, um, you shouldn't have any type of long-term storage that could become debris in the next flood. That's really the basic, the basic guideline to follow. Could there be an exception? Probably. I mean, I, I don't know, probably. I could write and request it to FEMA if we're requesting a waiver from the floodway regulations. I, and we can request it. They can come and look. We do have a nice new bridge that might change, um, the pattern of the water there, I would guess. But, um, and Dolores, did, I think she did check with Sersa. Did you hear back from them? No, okay. Um, about, you know, if there, I understand we could have a waiver that we're not liable, but if all of those RVs hit our new wastewater plant, I would think it could do some damage.
So in regard to direction, uh, two things. I think it would be important to maybe, uh, put, uh, the brain trust, uh, together to see if we could come up with an alternative site. And still, uh, and still basically have the concept. And then the other thing is, uh, I would like you to personally, this is a board decision, send that, uh, letter of request to FEMA and see if, uh, the difference of, uh, our brand new bridge might, uh, make a difference in their determination.
That will take this new letter of map revision, which is, um, a $300,000 to $400,000 project that, um, we are adding to our grant list. So I think I can have FEMA review it as is, but there's not, there is some basic engineering of just that bridge, yes.
Okay.
I don't, might take a year, but we can ask.
I mean, what's the pleasure of the board? Trusty Lo?
No on that site.
Trusty Wa?
Uh, let's find another site.
Trusty Rogan?
Let's find another site and see if there's a private enterprise willing to take on this project.
Trusty Caraviss?
No on this site. Uh, we've got, we got a couple empty buildings sitting just on the eastern corridor. I think, uh, developer Boulder Own, City of Boulder Owns. They're sitting empty. There's already an RV parked behind one of them, whether that's personal or is already starting to sell it. Maybe we should have our Chamber of Commerce checking into that or the EVC check into that also.
And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, I'm fine with looking at an, at, at an alternative site. This was just one idea. And you mentioned the island. There actually is some space on the other side of the wastewater treatment plant. It's not in the floodplain. I don't know if it's dedicated to wastewater treatment plant use or not. Um, with regard to private enterprise, if there was a private enterprise that was doing this or had any land to do it on, I wouldn't be pushing it for the town to do it. I'd defer to private enterprise in a heartbeat. Problem is every commercial lot in town is occupied. And I haven't heard that Mr. Tamborello, which, who has the only annexed, uh, lot in the eastern corridor, has any interest in doing this as part of this project. If he does, great. Let private enterprise do it. The town doesn't have to fool with it, but it's really something that no private enterprise has ever done in Lyons, I don't think. And so if the town has excess land that's not in the floodway that we could devote to this, uh, I think we should do it. So that, that would, I agree with the direction to try to find an alternate site that would work.
As do I. So you have your, uh, you have your direction from the board, Administrator Simonson? Go ahead.
I just, um, was looking at the floodplain map. We, we just cleared the Fryzig parcel. It's got a nice concrete pad. Maybe that could, maybe that could work.
Okay, whatever, whatever alternative site can possibly work, the Board of Trustees would be very interested in hearing about it. Thank you very much. Discussion of future agenda items. Trustees, Trusty Rogan? Oh, excuse me. Did I forget something?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Go ahead. Read the next item into the record.
Yes, next item is the update on the listing of the Apple Valley Water Treatment Plant property.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Administrator Simonson?
Thank you. Um, this, there's another site we could use in the interim. Wastewater, the water treatment plant. Um, I, I do need to acknowledge that I have not given this the amount of time that I understand the board has wanted to go toward this. I have been honestly trying to prioritize between open positions and audits and, um, other things, our, our day-to-day workload and but I, but we did take steps and I do want to tell you about those. Um, our first step was to contact all of the local Realtors. We did do that. And, um, I had two that said they had an interest in responding. So I gave them, um, 14 days to submit some form of a proposal to me. So that ate up a few weeks. I did not get any. Then I heard from a different, another local that he didn't receive the first two notices. I double-checked my, my work and we did send them, but maybe they went to his, his junk mail or something. So then I gave him another couple of weeks to respond. He did not. So then I reached out to the Boulder County Real Estate Association, I think is the name of it. Told them that I was looking for any Realtors that had, you know, experience in this area. I waited. It has now been four weeks. I've not gotten a response. So I need to put some time and attention into this. It is one of those that has, has easily gone to the wayside waiting for weeks to go by. I decided today, and I'm talking to staff tomorrow, I'm going to ask the planning staff, since none of us, you know, are really have this in our, our, our purview, I'm going to see if they are willing to take this on and give it the time and attention it needs to get listed and see what kind of interest is out there. So, um, while we're talking- it needs to get listed and see what kind of interest is out there. So while we're talking about that, I got a notice on Friday that the City of Longmont is wanting to apply to be part of a Brownfields Community program where they will be eligible for funding for cleanup of difficult sites. They called us and said, would you be interested in being a partner in this with us? You don't have to do any of the work. We'll do all the work. But it would make you, we get more points for our submittal, and then you would be eligible to get some funding for hard to reclaim projects. So I don't have any detail yet to give that to you. It just happened on Friday. But it did kind of make me think that maybe if we could get some funds like that, it actually may make that property worth a little more money than it is in its current state, noting someone's got to put 150 grand into cleaning it. So we, I will commit to giving you a full update in your next report. And I'm going to assign it to another staff who can focus on it specifically, because I have not been able to give it much attention other than what I told you.
Are there any questions for Administrator Simonson? Trustee Lo.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the update on that. On that City of Longmont Brownfield project, does that old water treatment plant qualify as a brownfield? Is there anything hazardous up there?
There's nothing hazardous per se, other than there's different definitions of, of cleanup projects. They told us that probably our water treatment plant, our water tank, and then if we ever have any other land that might have some unknown reclamation under it, would be eligible as well. So again, it was just Friday. They just asked if we even had an interest in looking at it. I indicated, yes, I'd be interested in seeing, you know, what it's about, especially if it doesn't involve us and you have staff that'll help us with it. So we should be getting some information. Probably preliminary, and it may not be something we want to do, but it sounded kind of interesting because I knew this was coming up, that maybe this is a way to make that land a little more valuable than, than selling it for minimal, knowing someone's got to put that kind of money into it.
It's going to make it a lot more valuable. What were the, what were the estimations on demolition years ago?
The last time I did it was the year before the flood. I think it was 2012, and it was 110,000.
Yeah, it's going to end up being today, probably, you know, I don't know, 150 or something. That's a net gain. That's a net gain that somebody doesn't have to invest. So that's actually very exciting news. And hopefully, we can get that done. Any further questions on the subject?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead, sir.
And what you're talking about, Victoria, is they, they basically help or pay for, do all runaround work to basically implode the building on itself, open up the tank so water can drain through it, then we can fill it, you know, just riprap and then cover in dirt.
The underground tank at the water treatment plant?
Yeah.
There's a couple of ways. What we found out when Tamburello filled in the tanks out east, they had to go down six feet or 10 feet, and then the rest could be, did not have to be remediated. But they were both water treatment plants, so I think they would be similar. I know a wastewater plant would be very different, but as water, the, the biggest chemicals are chlorine and alum. And they were able to just break it into itself.
Did they have to open up the bottom of the tanks? The guy let groundwater through?
No, they didn't have to. I think there were pipes that led elsewhere.
Okay. Because I, you know, I'll volunteer to push the plunger down, grab explosive cord along the bottom of that thing. I'd be fine.
No, I mean, it's going to take a little work, but might be, might be interesting at least to find out.
Yeah, if you need extra dirt to fill in with, we said, told some of them, we'll find local people to dump their riprap, and that's probably a location we could fill that thing with part of it.
Trustee Wong.
I think this is great news, and we should definitely pursue it. I would also like us to continue trying to find a way to get it on the market while we're waiting for this. You know, commercial people can be very creative, and, you know, I shouldn't, we shouldn't assume that it cleaned up might be better for some crazy idea that we haven't even thought of yet. So I'd like to continue to try to sell it because it's not, it's, nothing's done until it's done. So.
Any further discussion? Good. Thank you, Administrator Simonson. Now we'll move on to discussion for future agenda items. Trustees, trustee Rogan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a workshop where the LAHC can present about becoming a Colorado creative district. You all might remember, or maybe not, that when I was first running for trustee, this was an idea that I floated. It could have enormous benefits to the town, enormous. And so I think it's worth a workshop for the LAHC to discuss what those might be and what the process is. So I'd like to request that as soon as we can, as soon as they can get on the, on the roster of workshops.
It's a, it's a, it's a, because I've talked to Lauren about it recently. It's kind of a, a long-term process, but I agree with you 100% that we should have a workshop on it. And, and as soon as, I would basically judge it on when they're getting ready to make a presentation about what it takes to create it and maybe become more educated on the process. But I agree with that 100%, and we'll pursue that. Any other items that any trustees would like to put on future agendas? Mayor Proten Browning.
Yes. One would be board discussion and kind of both a status report and possible direction on future use of the depot building. There've been several ideas floated, and is it going to be totally vacant in the land? And we need to look at the zoning on it. We need to check with the State Historical Commission because there, there are some restrictions. I don't think they're too bad in terms of interior use, but they basically granted us money to re, to reconstruct it, and we really have to check with them. So I think just basically figure out what we're going to do with it whenever it may become available. And second, as discussed earlier, board discussion and direction on the curbside limb pickup.
Okay. Anything else? Trustee Kervis.
Basically, possibly just maybe more clarification on our workshop on the fire task force, where we go from there. Because obviously, density was talked about, or several people, you know, concerned about density. Well, we do have ADUs and STRs that we're so happy to want to put in our denser neighborhoods, as trustee Wong has indicated to us before. We're only allowed in certain parts of town. So we're going, we're going to be in conflict with ourselves. So just, in that task force, when we get together, start working on it, we gotta, it's, there should be a lot of moving pieces. So I don't know, I want clarification of, are we, is this coming, this task force not bringing us more information? Are we moving forward ourselves, PCDC? What's the, what's the process?
Okay. Can you research that and, and report back to us at the next meeting, Administrator Simonson? It seems to me that basically it's in the hands of the PCDC till they make their, their final determination, and then they'll present it to the Board of Trustees. Am I mistaken on that?
That's my understanding. They were going to have recommendations to bring forward.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Summary of action items. Madam Clerk.
Victoria, I may have missed a few, or Brandon, if you can catch them. I've got a, trustee Wong would like to see a monthly sales tax report with numbers, local versus online. Staff to research alternative sites for RV parking, and the planning staff to lead the Apple Valley Water Facility sale and partner with Longmont.
Administrator Simonson.
I also have, we're going to just check with our insurance company regarding the solar battery and coverage on that. And then just the items we just talked about now.
Counselor.
I don't have anything different.
Okay. I believe we're going into executive session, are we not, Counselor?
Yep. What is hopefully a very short executive session.
Good. Town Clerk Vasquez.
Mayor Protem, I just emailed you the Callahan language, if you need it. And then I'll send the link in just a minute as well. And I will not be in that meeting, Victoria. Well, it'll be set to record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you.
Has a link, has a link been sent for that meeting?
She's sending it right now.
Thank you, Dolores.
So as soon as the statement is read in, we'll put together mine.
Actually, I printed it out during the break, sort of. I move to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS Sections 24-6-4024E and 24-6-424B for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators, and for legal attorneys representing the town's municipal court complaint against Dennis and Christine Callahan for violations of the Lyons Municipal Code. That's a motion that would require a second to be.
Second.
The mayor's not here. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Shouldn't we? Sorry.
Mayor Proten Browning, trustee Lo.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Trustee Rogan.
Aye.
Trustee Kervis.
Aye.
And for the record, Mayor Angelo left the meeting, but it passes unanimously.
We still have a majority, so.
Okay. For, for the public listening, we are leaving this meeting and going into a separate link.
And the meeting will end at the conclusion of that separate meeting, so.
Yep. Good night, everyone.